I'm gonna call the meeting to order for the Board of County Commissioners Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020. And with that call to order, I'd like to ask Juan Sanchez to come forward and give our invocation. They took the microphone down. Would you please let him have a microphone? After Mr. Sanchez completes his invocation this morning, we're gonna ask Commissioner Goddard if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you if you...
Good morning, everyone. Heavenly Father, we call before you this morning. Father, like never before, we pray for our nation. We pray for our president. We pray for the government, Father. Local and federal members of the government, Lord, Father. We pray that you continually give them the strength to protect them, Lord, Father. We believe that this is an hour of prayer for our nation like never before. Father, we pray for this local government, Father. We pray that these members and these men and the women that occupy this position of authority, you continually give them the strength, wisdom, you protect them, Lord, Father. We also pray for the law enforcement, Lord, Father. We pray for their families, Father. We pray for your protect- for their protection, Lord. Father, we pray also as a citizens, Lord, as a one body, we will continue to face the challenge that we're facing today, Father. And in the power of the lo- your love and your grace and your strength, Father, together, we will overcome whatever comes against us, Father. We thank you and we praise you. In the precious name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Please join me. Thank you, Minister Sanchez, and thank you, Mr. Goddard. The chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Before we move into our presentations this morning, we have to do some IT work. So I'm gonna need to recess the meeting for about five or 10 minutes while the IT department resets the podium. So we're gonna recess at this time. ...... The agenda, which is our presentations. The first one is from the Tax Collector's Office, Operation Update. Ms. Bridges.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everyone this morning?
Good.
So like many businesses, we've all had to find new ways to conduct business. But we just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that all three of our offices are open. We do still encourage customers to use the Internet for some of their services. So many of those transactions, paying taxes, renewing registrations, those types of things can be done online. The state has even implemented some things to make some of our jobs easier. So for instance, a road exam, we cannot meet the social distancing being in a vehicle. So they have allowed what they call remote services. That is offered in the Palacca office only, and we're able to administer the driving exam using a phone via Bluetooth. The driver must have a licensed driver, 21 years of age, in the vehicle with them. So we are still doing all of those things that, you know, we need to do in the course of our business day. There are a lot of people that think that we were still closed and that we're only doing certain things. We are full service. There are some requirements with some of the transactions that we complete for people. We do not require appointments, but we do encourage them, and appointments are honored before the walk-ins. There are a few transactions that do require an appointment just because we cannot meet the social distancing. So concealed weapons permitting. In order for us to fingerprint people, we have to be in a closer proximity than the six feet. So the customer is required to wear a mask. Our staff also wears a mask. And then we do a temperature check. The same thing is required for a hazmat. That's the fingerprinting for a commercial driver's license, and they must go through the same, wearing a mask and temperature check. Those transactions are conducted in our Palacca office only, and the remote services driver's license exam is conducted in the Palacca office only. We do hope to have those up in our branch offices again soon. So we are working to do that. We do have a drop box on the side of our building. People can drop off tax payments, their registrations through that drop box if they choose not to come in. And we have added additional phone lines. So as I said, many of the transactions can be completed online or over the phone. We have staff standing by to help people if they have any issues, and we're ready to serve. Questions?
Any questions at this time?
I just have a comment, Mr. Chairman. Brenna, I just want to thank you for what your Linda's office does. And I reached out to you about somebody having trouble, you know, paying their taxes, and you reached out to them and took care of that. So I just appreciate, appreciate that.
You're quite welcome. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you for coming this morning.
Thanks, Brenna.
Next will be Item 3B, Finance Presentation of the Fiscal Year 2019 Audit. Who's taking that one, Terry?
I believe as car rigs and things are inserted, I'll be here to do that.
Thank you, Paul.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Frank Mason. I am the engagement partner on your county's audit. We have completed that audit, which you know was actually issued in March. So we're here to, because of the interruptions, I think a little later than ordinary. You're probably used to seeing Tina Robinson. Tina's been the partner on this engagement for many, many years. I shadowed Tina the last two cycles, and this cycle, I stepped into the role that she was retiring from. So I am responsible for our SPU, our practice unit's audit quality, and I'm very happy to be here today. The reports are of a great nature. Sometimes we don't get the opportunity to have, you know, good reports, and this is one where I think that being on the receiving end of what you're gonna hear today is, is a good thing. The reports are unmodified, which is the highest level of opinion that you can receive from your audit firm. And I'm gonna turn it over to Amy. Amy is the senior manager with our firm, and she was responsible for the day-to-day activity of the team, as well as managing all of the flow of information between the teams. So, and I do, before I step aside, want to thank all of the staff and the administration that have helped us through this audit. It is in excess of 2,000 hours of work, and we appreciate the responsiveness that all of the officers and the finance directors and administration have helped us to get to this point today. So thank you for having us, and I'll turn it over to Amy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just gonna do a brief summary of your audit report this year. In your audit book that you would have received on page 144, that is a summary page. That kinda tells you, you know, a brief outline of exactly what happened as a result of your audit. And for fiscal year 19, it includes the opinions on the financial statements, opinions on the major federal and state programs that we audited. And those all were, like Frank said, unmodified or clean opinions. So the highest level that you can receive. This page also includes opinions of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each of the five major funds that we audited, and the aggregate remaining funds. The five major funds included the general fund, the road project fund, the Better Place Plan Fund, the Waste Management Fund, and the East Putnam Water Fund. Also, in the summary page, we reported to you that there were no material weaknesses found. And there were two internal control significant deficiencies noted. And those included, one, the first one being about the IT controls and just strengthening those. That is a repeat finding that you've had in previous years, but we do feel like that is taken care of and most likely will not be repeated going forward. And, and the second internal control deficiency was related to the timely billings for the ambulance services. And then also, there was another matter reported, which is your finding number three, and that is related to an internal control form used for the Public Works Department. And we recommended that those be approved and certified by a construction engineer at all times. Also on page 144 of your audit report, this summary page that I'm speaking of, it reports to you specifically about the major federal program and state projects that we audited under the Uniform Guidance Criteria. You received an unmodified clean opinion on those as well. Our testing of the one federal program and four state projects that met the criteria under Uniform Guidance resulted in no matters of non-compliance on those. So that is also a good report. And the county also qualified as a low-risk audit under that criteria as well. Some other matters that I want to go over with you in the rest of our reports that we provide to you in your audit report, those start on page 136 of your audit report. And among other areas mentioned in the management letter that's on that page, the state is, requires us to apply financial condition assessments. And that is as of the end of the year. We have to look to see if you meet the definition of financial emergency or deteriorating financial condition, as defined in the Florida statutes. The procedures show that the county does not fall into the condition of financial emergency, and you also do not meet the statutory definition of deteriorating financial condition. So those are both good results. Additionally, based on the 2019 expenditures, the available general fund balance, fund balance are sufficient to cover approximately four months of general operating expenditures in the next year. Last year, you had only about 2.4 months to cover. So that is a much better result this year, and better than the GFOA's recommendation of two months. So. We are also required by the state to comment on whether any prior findings have been corrected. And there was only one prior finding that is repeated, as I discussed earlier, for fiscal year 19, related to the strengthening of the IT-related controls. And the other prior year findings were all corrected. The report on page 138 of your audit book is, is on our test of your compliance with Florida statutes, Section 218415 regarding investments. We saw no issues with investment compliance and have reported here that, in our opinion, the county complied in all materials respects with those statutes. And also, a report on page 139 is also required by the state, which attests to the county's compliance with certain sections of the Florida statute, Chapter 365, regarding authorized expenditures and uses of E911 funds. Based on our tests, the county complied in all material respects with these statutes as well. This actually concludes my summary of the audit report. And as always, I just want to say again, thank you to staff and management and commissioners for allowing us to serve as your, your auditors and for, you know, responding to all of our requests and allowing us to give you the results timely this year again. And we are open to any questions that you might have to us at this time.
Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank and Amy, Amy, thank you. Appreciate the audit. And really good news about going from 2.4 months to four months' worth of general fund balance. That we've really kinda hold the line on that. We wanted to build reserve without raising taxes, and we did a really good job at doing that. The three findings, though, I've been here for a while, and IT, I'm not cutting them down. They seem, that seems to be the one that always comes up. And probably by the nature of what they do. I mean, I don't think it's anything more than that. IT changes daily, and how do you keep up with that daily, you know, curve? As much as you think you're above the curve, you're never in IT above the curve. So, but you said, I think, Amy, you said that you might not, we might not ever see this one again. Was, why, why would you say that?
So, so the finding is really just reporting to strengthen the risk assessment process and the policies in place. And so we, we, we know that there is a policy being worked on, and it has been being worked on for quite some time. And so our understanding is that that policy will be in place, I think, as of now, if not mistaken. And so going forward, we don't expect to see that, that finding again. Now, that's not to say that there won't be different types of internal control findings related to IT, but this one in particular, we feel like will be addressed going forward.
Okay. Thank you. And, and really, the ambulance billing, we've caught up on that or we're catching up on that. So that's a good thing. And then the Public Works Department, we handled that. So I, I really greatly appreciate y'all coming down and sharing this information with us today. And, I mean, it's really a huge improvement of where we were to where we're at today, and especially these fund balances. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. I'd like to also piggyback on those comments. We appreciate it. And for one commissioner, I'm very proud that we received an unmodified audit rating. Wasn't like that a couple of years ago, and I appreciate the fact that we're moving in the proper direction. As Commissioner Harvey said, our ambulance billings, we have a program right now where we're trying to catch up on them and stay caught up into the future. I think the, we've met with them, and we're working on that. And the, like Commissioner Harvey said, the, the forms are now being approved in the proper manner over at, at the Public Works. So I appreciate y'all coming this morning. I really do. Is there any other commissioners who'd like to make comments on the audit before we stop? Okay. Thank you very much for coming this morning. Did you wave your hand, Kenny? I'm sorry.
Your microphone's off.
I'd like to thank Finance for all the work they've done with this. They work extremely close with the audit committee, and, and this is a huge task every year, and, and the committee and the Finance Department work extremely close together. So I want to thank Susan, her staff, for being right there to help them through this. It can, if they're not there to help them through it, it makes for a long audit report. So I want to thank her for her work.
Absolutely. Mr. Downs, I think that we would be remiss if we didn't thank our, our internal financial department. And I was gonna do that in just a minute, but I'm glad you beat me to it. Thank you. Thank you for coming today. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
The next presentation on the list is gonna be from Ms. Young on the county-wide projects update that we've, we've been requesting so we can keep up on what's going on. Ms. Young?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning. We had a large number of projects with updates, so there are a few that didn't update from May to June. I'm not gonna skip over them, although the report on... Are you on? Thank you, Chairman. Just to reiterate, the project update presentation is meant to provide the commission with a public update on a handful of projects, which are of most interest to the commission and/or citizens and/or administration. The project list is not intended to be an all-inclusive list of every project or initiative underway by county departments. As just reviewed, I'm only gonna update you on the ones that have had major changes between last month and this month, because the list is very long today. The complete list is available online, as well as to your emails. The administration is still underway with the census, and as of 6/9 of 2020, Putnam County has a 47.9% response rate. The state average response rate is 58.3, and the national average is 60.8. The animal control facility, the board discussed the conceptual floor plan at the June workshop. Revisions are, have been requested. Ms. Suarez is working with the drafter to provide revisions to that conceptual floor plan, and procurement will be contacted by the group as soon as they are ready to explore procurement steps. The Melrose Library Expansion, the final review of construction documents have been approved. The architect is drafting the documents needed for the bid cycle. The bid for construction is expected to be in June or July. The project plate and splash pad is complete. The comprehensive plan project underway by the Planning Department, a tentative schedule has been developed, which will provide an underlying strike-through version of goals, objectives, and policies to the VOCC in the beginning of October. Citizen meetings and workshops and focus group workshops are being scheduled and should be completed by the ending, by the beginning of August. The Planning Commission is having a special meeting tomorrow, June 24th, at 6:00 PM in the VOCC meeting room, to discuss the future land use, housing, transportation, and conservation elements. This is not the second Palacca Citizen Workshop. That meeting will be forthcoming in the near future. Planning Department, or the Building Department, is ongoing with the Citizen Serve Online Permitting Project. Everything has been executed. Implementation phase is underway. Internal and external teams are meeting weekly to review and complete implementation of modules. The County Road 207 Bridge over Dog Branch Creek, the bridge work has been completed, and the bridge is open for traffic. Roadwork on the approaches is still underway, but the project is on schedule and scheduled to be completed by or before the end of July. The 2009 Dirt to Pave Project, construction on all roads, has been completed. Final punch lists and quality checks are in process. The Main Street Sidewalk Construction Project Notice to Proceed was issued, and construction is underway. Construction to date is roughly 20% complete. That estimated completion date is October of 2020. Public Works has a project at Ashley Lake underway. The Lime Rock part of the project is complete. The prime code has been applied, and we are waiting on a paving schedule. The Public Works had the Barden Bridge project underway. The design for the bridge is complete, and FDOT is reviewing the plans, and we are in the process of working to secure the needed right-of-way. We are having a bit of trouble making contact with the property owner of the necessary property for the right-of-way, but staff is working through that process as best as possible. Public Works is working on the GIS mapping and mowing. They piloted three devices on various pieces of equipment. Data gathering and on-test equipment is coming in, and it's coming in well. We are making some minor modifications to the process and the mapping displays. Once finalized, we can implement, implement and be operational completely within 45 days. St. John's Avenue Resurfacing Project, Palm Avenue to the CSX Crossing, the design is underway. We are at 30% design plans, which have been submitted for review. The Road Resurfacing Project was awarded, and contracts with JMA, J&amp;M, also known as Florida Trucking, PNS, and Halifax are completed, and those contracts have construction underway as we speak. The East Palacca Wastewater Treatment Plant, the tie-ins for Elsie Drive is complete. The horse landing tie-in is scheduled to be completed and is underway. The County Road 310 Bridge Rehabilitation, RFQ was issued. Responses were due on June 12th. The intent to recommend rank order will be brought to you July 28th. The Dirt to Pave 2020 Project, the survey work is in progress. They expect to be completed and ready to bid by the end of July. County Road 315 Crosswalk, quotes are being sought to complete that work. St. John's Avenue Drainage Improvements, State Road 19 to County Road 309C, the design is underway, and discussion on retention pond location is ongoing. The St. John's Avenue Bike Trail, the intent to award was issued today. FDOT review and anticipate the formal award being brought to you at the July 14th VOCC meeting. The low bid came in just below budget. Road resurfacing and restriping, Road Restriping and Pavement Marking Project for 2020, bid 2018 was issued, but the bids received were not acceptable, and we plan to resolicit that project in July. Cell 4A Construction Out at Sanitation, contract for services has been executed. Design work is in progress. Communication with DEP regarding discussions of options to provide value-add alternatives to the original schematic design is underway. We still expect construction to start sometime in the third quarter of 2020, and we expect it to take six months to be completed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Young. And are there any questions on this project list update?
I just have one.
Mr. Rawls.
On the, the Varden Bridge, you're, the right-of-way that, I wasn't aware that we're, we're gonna have to obtain a right-of-way. I thought we were staying within the same foot- same footprint of the original bridge. How much of the right of way do we have to obtain?
Um, remember, I'm getting a high-level overview of that project. So, let me get back with you on that. I do believe it is a small portion and most of it is underwater. So, it's not, you know, high and dry land, if you will. But let me get you the details on that, Commissioner.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Any more questions on the project list? Yeah, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to make a comment. You know, you hear things, rumor mills, that nothing's going on in the county. And it took you darn near seven minutes probably to get through the whole list. There's a lot happening here in Putnam County. We got a lot of projects out. Um, I mean, good things that are really gonna spur economic development and harden our, our county. So, thank you for compiling that list and going through it. Um, I'd like to get a copy of that, though, when you get a chance because it's hard to keep up with all these things as you go on through the day, but I appreciate...
It's being emailed to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like your copy electronically or on paper?
Yes, electronically is fine.
It's being emailed right now.
Yeah.
Right now.
Right now.
Commissioner Pickens?
Ms. Young, did you say that the striping, um, contract has to go, has to go back out?
Yes, sir. We were not satisfied with the bids. They came in over budget. Um, and we do not believe they were, we don't believe it should have been over budget. So, we're gonna retweak, um, some of the information within the solicitation. We're gonna rebid it, uh, because we're, it's not acceptable.
Okay. Then that will be done in July?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any more questions on the project list? Thank you, Ms. Young.
Yes, sir.
Administrator Suggs, did you say that HR wanted to make a presentation? Would you let us know what it's concerning?
Yes, sir. I'd be more than happy to apologize. It's not on the agenda. We just got everything taken care of, but we want to take this opportunity. Ms. Parker, can you come to the podium, please? And this, uh, this presentation is going to be the announcement of a retirement of one of our county employees. And, uh, so, Ms. Papel, would you be so kind as to join Ms. Parker at the podium, please?
Good morning.
As you know, uh, Ms. Papel has been here for almost five years now and, and she stepped in at a time of need. Uh, she was hired by Mr. Leary, your former county administrator. And when, uh, the need arose, Ms. Papel, as well as Mr. Maney stepped in and, and did everything that they could possibly do to, to support not only the commissioners, but the staff and the citizens of Putnam County. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Lori Parker for her presentation.
Good morning. Uh, this presentation is for Stacy, as you know, is retiring next Tuesday. That's her last day. And this is a plaque presented to her for over, um, almost five years of service, dedicated service to the citizens of Putnam County. And her retirement date is June 30th, 2020, which is next Tuesday. So, if you guys could join me and... I know she has five years of service here, but I think she has a combined total of public service. Is it 25?
Just about.
25 years of public service. So, yes.
If you count auditing governments.
Yes. Or more. That's correct. So, this is a presentation for her and we appreciate all her service with us.
Can we get a social distancing photo?
(laughing)
Yeah, I think...
How do we do that?
Good luck with that. Yeah.
That's not the Stacy.
You wanna say something?
No.
Oh, come on.
Hey, please, please do.
I'm gonna miss you guys, but I'm not gonna miss working. I'm ready to, to let the younger, more energetic crowd pick up the torch and move on.
All right. Some of y'all go down there and some of us stay up here where we can try to stay six foot apart. And you just have to back up with the camera away.
At least I left my mask over there.
It's probably not the corona picture she's imagining.
Yeah.
But, I was smiling. You get it?
(laughing)
Get that look, did you?
I did. I did.
Mr. Chairman, as everyone is getting back in their position, I'll take a moment here just to thank Stacy personally for all the assistance she provided me when I got here. It was, uh, it was an invaluable, uh, service and she has done a great job. And I certainly want to make sure that she understands the value and appreciation the county administrator had for, uh, for all she has done for us in my tenure here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stacy, um, I've been here almost four years. Stacy was here when I got elected. And so, we, we've had a great relationship. And she really has helped me, you know, understand the budgets, um, at the beginning and all the way through until now. But I will never, ever forget our first budget meeting in the boardroom over there. And, uh, she came in and she had a box and it said, I believe, Genesis Beer on it.
(inaudible).
Yeah. Genesis Beer, I guess. And I thought, well, maybe they're gonna give us a beer after this. It's good. The meeting's gonna be so bad. And then she sat down and she pulled out a big old bottle of Tums. And she set it in the middle of the table and she said, "This is the budget that y'all been hearing about for about 10 years. Get ready. It's gonna be tough." So, I'll never forget that. But we worked through it. And, uh, and as our audit report, uh, we're in much better shape. So, I wish you, um, the best of luck in retirement. And, uh, hopefully, one day, Holly and I will come see you in your cabin up in the mountains. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stacy, I'm gonna miss you. Uh, you came in a little bit after me and picked up the torch and really ran with it, put up with my, um, questioning constantly, daily, almost in your office, and really helped me to understand the county budget and what it's about. There's always more needs and there is money. And our job is to balance those out. And you've been excellent in doing that. Um, I do think we all have an expiration date. Some of us, you know, know that date coming up and some of us don't. But I will say, you've been very gracious to lead us during some really difficult times here and very confusing times, if you will. But, um, you did leave this place better than you found it. And that's all anyone can ever ask of anyone. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Rawls?
I'd just like to echo what Commissioner Pickens and Harvey said. Um, you know, the first time I walked in your office, I, I realized I was gonna like you because the way you kept your office. I said, "She keeps it like I do." And you were able to find everything that was on your desk. Um, you were very knowledgeable. Um, any question that I had, you were able to go right straight to the spreadsheet, um, just really drill down to, uh, the line item, um, that I was questioning on. And I just really appreciate everything that you taught me. And, um, you will be, will miss. And, um, hopefully, we can communicate, uh, after you leave here and you can still answer questions if I have them. But thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, and I'd like to also echo and wish you the best in retirement. I hope you have a wonderful time in it. I didn't realize you were moving to the mountains, but best of luck on that.
We're, we're still gonna live here, too.
Okay, good. Must be a good retirement, then. Thank you, Stacy, for your service to the county. Um, with that being said, we're gonna move into public comment. I'm having, uh, more IT problems this morning. I know time, or so. Julie, if you'd keep time for us?
Yeah.
And, um, use the microphone where they can hear it go off, please. Um, and we'll start public comment. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberations about matters on which the board has not received prior, uh, information as part of this agenda. Please limit to three minutes. Uh, public comment cards are conveniently placed at the meeting room entrance and should be submitted prior to the meeting to the deputy clerk who sits to the right of the podium. If you would, just lay them on that table with the, uh, black tablecloth. Um, with that being said, first person I'm gonna call is Tom Townsend. Tom, if you'd give us your name and address for the record, please, even though you're infamous.
I don't know about that. Tom Townsend, 605 North Third Street, Palaca, Florida. Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity to speak. Uh, I want to add my name to those who would like to see the statue at the courthouse, Confederate statue, removed. Uh, personally, I don't want it on any public space outside of a museum. But of all the war monuments, we have honoring those who have fought. One statue overshadows all others in size and prominence of placement. It's not a stretch for many to assume because of its size and prominence, that it represents what we as a community value and honor most. For me, that alone is reason for us to get it off the grounds of the courthouse. But there are many reasons. The courthouse is a place that represents justice, a place where our rights should be reassured, a place that demonstrates, demonstrates America's attempt to treat all equally. In order to enter our courthouse, you must walk by the towering Confederate statues whose soldiers fought for what they believed. Part of that belief was protecting the right to own people, people they could lawfully treat worse than we would treat our animals. This sentiment is expressed in the written word by the Confederate Vice President in his cornerstone speech several weeks before the first shots of the Civil War. I'm so glad they weren't successful. The cornerstone speech lays out the states' rights issue that seems to be the justification of so many who want the statue to remain as well as the defense for continuing to fly the Confederate flag. I'd like to read a brief excerpt about those states' rights from the cornerstone speech. Quote, "Our new government is founded upon exactly the opposite idea. Its foundations are laid. Its cornerstone rests upon the great truth that the Negro is not equal to the white man, that slavery subordination to the superior race is its natural and normal condition," unquote. Alexander Stevens goes on to say about our founding fathers, quote, "They were attempting to make things equal which the Creator had made unequal," unquote. Today, we're fortunate to have such leadership in our young people. And I encourage you to follow the example they have displayed. They have shared their hearts. Darnisha Leonard and Tavella Adams, who want the statue to be removed, have gone about this in a very positive, professional way. Gavin Thomas, a young man for years, who has sincerely articulated his advocacy for keeping the monuments for reasons no longer doubt, showed the courage to listen. He knows there's a way to honor his ancestors that doesn't come at costing so many the pain the statue causes each and every day. I close by asking all elected officials, current and former, as well as those that seek office, share your heart. Do you believe this is the appropriate place for this statue? To our county commissioners, I hope you won't put this on a referendum, but lead us with your judgment on right and wrong as what we use to value and honor most in our community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tom. The next person on the list is Mike Shalepi.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, say something real quick?
About what? You gonna answer every one of them or just that one? We got it coming to workshop on the 14th in the afternoon. Is it something that can't wait till then?
I guess it can.
Up to you, sir, I mean.
No, I, I just want to make a statement real quick. Tom, I appreciate you coming in. And, and, you know, personally, I think this should be, um, on a referendum decided by the citizens. Um, if, if you saw what my email and text messaging, Facebook Messenger and, um, looks like and phone calls that I get, you understand where I'm coming from. So, it's, it, it's very passionate on both sides. So, but I do appreciate your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Mr. Shalepi, please come up.
Thank you, sir. My name is Mike Shalepi. I'm at 358 East River Road, East Palaca. I want to address an issue I've noticed over the last six months in which our American flag is not flying over top of our fire stations in this county. To go to the fact that even the newest fire station built in this county doesn't have a flagpole to fly, any flag. And I would like to know why. I don't expect an answer now, but I do expect you guys to look into this, please.
You can bet your bottom dollar on it. It's, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. I missed, I missed that one.
Thank you.
Mr. Suggs, I'm hoping that we'll look into that. And by next week, we'll have flags flying at our fire station.
We'll have an answer by the end of the day, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Appreciate the heads up, too, Mike. Um, with that being said, the next one is, uh, Brim King. Am I saying it correctly?
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you'd give us your name and address for the record, please, sir.
I'm Brian King, 100 Neering, Interlock, in Florida. I moved here in 2014, built North Florida Emulsions, the road construction oil company on Moody Industrial Complex. My little brother runs now to do the dirt road programs. So, to see, in 15 years, I haven't been in front of a council. And, and, uh, back then, it was in the other building and much, much, you know, more intimate. But this is nice. Progress. Good to see. The, the main, since I'm talking about the dirt road program, we did a road, 213, off 207, in 2004. We chip sealed it and overlaid it. It's almost 20 years old. You haven't had to put a dime into it. There's ways to do these roads that'll last 30 years. But the asphalt plants, they want every 10 years, mill and pave it, mill and pave it. So, that's not why I'm here. Why I'm here is I'm a parent parente to four children. DCF is taken from their mother. I suggest, humbly suggest, that you all look into DCF and Child Services, what they do, their credentials, their caring or uncaring nature. Uh, when four children are taken out of a house under false pretenses, when they lie to the judge about drug transactions supposedly occurring that didn't, when the officers were there, these two departments and the people working in there need to be looked into. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And that's about that. And have a pleasant day.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you.
For coming this morning.
Have a good day.
Next on the, uh, list is Tim Hotelling. Tim, if you'd give him just a second to finish his, uh, get sanitizing for your podium.
Greetings. Tim Hotelling, 105 Riverside Way, San Mateo. Uh, just a thought, and I'm told there, hopefully, there's other folks saying, we're getting real close to the election cycle. All of the other, the places that, around the county that you all have had to attend, uh, for candidate forums are generally constrained, confined areas. Um, I was on, uh, Mr. Parker's website yesterday, day before. And the first, uh, it appeared to me the first candidate forum's gonna be after the primary election, which doesn't allow voters much access to, uh, information to even get a visual, uh, to go with all the signs that are out there now. Um, I, perhaps the county could consider, uh, identifying a facility, this or another one, that could be allowed and work with, uh, the, the regular groups that, that provide these forums and, and let, uh, both parties, anybody that, that has candidates, uh, present them to the public.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. The next, um, person on the list this morning, Douglas Hayes. Douglas, if you'll let him have just a minute.
Gotcha. Good morning. My name is Douglas Hayes. Candidate for County Commissioner, District Three. I live at two sixteen Huron Avenue, Satsuma. Before you put the timer on me, I want to address Ms.
The timer went on when you said your first word.
Well, anyway, Ms. Popeil, I have called with numerous questions, budget related, money related, and she has always catered to me. She set the bar. I expect the same from the new replacement. She's been outstanding, helpful. She didn't have the answer, she knew where the answer was, and guided me quite often, tolerated my multiple questions. The reason I'm here today is it's been brought to my attention that our communication systems for the sheriff's office is in a disarray. It's obsolete. Money seems to be an issue, so I've done some research. Turns out that there's primarily two manufacturers of communications equipment. One kinda has a foothold on the state of Florida. That's L three Harris. They make communications equipment. They also have a grant program, which basically guides you to other agencies for funding. And then Motorola also has a grant program. But once again, it's more of a redirect, but they got their fingers in. One suggestion is that to get the two companies to compete, because then they might throw in some cheaper equipment, you know, that kind of thing. Now Homeland Security had a grant, USDA has some grants at Department of Justice, and FEMA is the primary grant source. If we correlate our nine one one system on upgrade, then there should be grants available for also our communications. They call it NG nine one one program. It's the new generation nine one one. So we need to interrelate our nine one one system with our communication system, and that would be the poster child for the grants. There's, the FEMA grant is to a statewide. I have yet to find the, at the state level FEMA grant availability, but most of these grants have pooped out around April, so we probably have to wait for another funding cycle. There's a term, which is called EDAC, and that's, that's the statewide law enforcement radio system, is the program that we're gonna wanna fall under. Okay, apparently they have, that's, what we're running into is our equipment is not communicating with the other agencies, and so there is an actual program. It's been in place for a few years, and so that would be one of the directions that we need to go. The Florida Department of Management Services might be able to give us some assistance in funding as well. The American Police and Sheriff's Association has a grants program, and then also, oh, firedgranthelp.com and policegranthelp.com and nine one one dot gov. That's where the funding for the communications, the interrelationship between nine one one system and our communication system, once again, it was our federal grants to the availability, primarily planned at FEMA. That should pretty much cover it.
Thank you for coming today, Douglas.
Thank you.
Just for the public's knowledge, I'm talking to the public now, Douglas. A lot of these have been looked at, and we're still working on funding for this. This was also an issue on the campaign trail two years ago, and we've been working on it hard as we can since, so it's not like it's a few dollars, it's millions. So with that being said, we're going to, pardon me?
May I say one last name?
How long is it gonna take you, Douglas?
Twenty seconds.
Okay, yes, sir. Please come forward. Paul, hang on, we'll redo it.
In regards to those grants, one of the things where it is a pinch for us is that most of them are a grant match, about twenty percent. So then I suggest use the, I think it's the twenty, ten twenty program that the sheriff party has, had started, and let's hold a fundraiser, and that would get the ball rolling.
Thank you, Douglas. Appreciate you coming this morning. With that being said, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, you have some emails this morning?
I do.
How did we get emails? This is an open meeting. Did we?
The fellow was still advised that we would accept email, couple comments for this week.
Okay, would you please read them, Ms. Parsons?
I have two. I have one from Victoria Jones, five three five Federal Point Road, East Placa. "Malty Oak and Statue. The oak tree did nothing wrong. It was just a pain in how it was used. It was the people who used it that are guilty, and they are lying gone. You can't change or delete the past by removing statues. It is best to just learn from them. Thank you." Please read this at your meeting on Tuesday, June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. This is Rita Zimmerl, three seven six, County Road three oh nine, Satsuma. "I spent two weeks in London, Paris, Barcelona, and Menorca last summer with my daughter and two granddaughters. The main theme that stuck out in all four places was their monuments and memorials. I will tell you that the United States does not have nearly enough. Their monuments and memorials are to people, events, battles won, et cetera. They are of different ages, styles, and materials, but are on public display everywhere. Their statues, monuments, and memorials were all in good shape and well-maintained. After visiting abroad, I have concluded that we do not have nearly enough monuments and memorials in the United States. We need much more to do justice to the courageous men and women who came before us. We need to celebrate the victories won. We need to erect more monuments, not destroy the ones we have. As to the multi, I'm assuming malty, if I understand what they are saying, they are agreeing that no one was hung from it. It just reminds them of a quote-unquote hanging tree. Do you think that black people were the only people who were ever hung from a tree? So just because someone is reminded of an incident that could have happened, the tree needs to go? I do hope that you aren't even considering killing that tree. The Confederate monument has stood upon that pedestal for nearly one hundred years without killing anyone, starting a war, or enslaving anyone. It should be a reminder that war is hell, some people don't return, and should be a last resort. When we remove all memories, we forget these things. Let it stand and be a reminder of a place and time we don't want to return. Let everyone know that history is important. You cannot change history. You can only learn from it. You grow from it, or you are doomed to repeat it. Please save our monument and our tree." And this is a letter from Attorney Seth Chipman. This is regarding Bayou Club Properties Owner Association, Inc. This is not on our planning and development one today. This is for case LM nineteen dash zero zero one and case PUD nineteen dash zero zero one, St. John's River Estates. Dear Commissioners, I represent as counsel Bayou Club Properties Owner Association, Inc. Bayou Club. I am writing to convey to the Planning Commission Bayou Club's opposition to St. John's River Estates' proposed amendments to the county's future land use map and county zoning map set forth under case LM nineteen dash zero zero one and case PUD nineteen dash zero zero one and St. John's River Estates' PUD Amendment Resoning Application Package, quote-unquote rezoning application, originally submitted over a year ago in January two thousand and nineteen. These matters encompass and directly affect Bayou Club. I understand that on June tenth, two thousand and twenty, the Planning Commission intends to hold a public hearing for purposes of considering St. John's River Estates' proposals and requests. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend the virtual hearing set for June tenth, two thousand and twenty at four P M. However, members of Bayou Club's Board of Directors will be attending, and I consent to the commission and other county representatives communicating directly with the association through Bayou Club's Board of Directors. First and foremost, St. John's River Estates falsely states in their rezoning package that Bayou Club is a co-applicant to their rezoning application, notwithstanding the illegality of applying such proposed zoning to Bayou Club, which I will discuss further below. It appears that St. John's River Estates has intentionally misrepresented that Bayou Club is a co-applicant to the subject rezoning application. Bayou Club has never in the past and will never endorse or be a part of such a rezoning application. Bayou Club's Board of Directors or membership at large has never approved or even been asked to take part in such a rezoning application. Bayou Club's Board of Directors is responsible for the operation and management of Bayou Club. The individual listed on the rezoning applications agent designation form is not a member of the Board of Directors and, under Florida law, is not authorized to act on behalf of Bayou Club. Florida law, as well as Putnam County's own zoning application requirements, see page three of six rezoning applications requirements for corporate applicants, prohibit an entity merely due to their ownership of property in Bayou Club to act on behalf of Bayou Club. Bayou Club's letter dated April eighth, two thousand and nineteen, previously sent to Mike Brown, Planning Manager, and Terry Turner, Putnam County Commissions, objecting to St. John's River Estates' misrepresentation that Bayou Club is a co-applicant to the rezoning application stands. As of the date of this letter, Bayou Club is unaware of any attempt to correct this disturbing, if not fraudulent, misrepresentation, wrongfully indicating that Bayou Club is an applicant to the rezoning application. St. John's River Estates' assertion is patently false, and their failure to correct the record in this regard suggests underhandedness and bad faith on their part. The rezoning application should be denied in full on the above basis alone. Second, even if Bayou Club were a party to the rezoning application for argument's sake, approving St. John's Estates' rezoning application would still violate Florida law. Since nineteen eighty-five, Bayou Club has operated as a residential community, subject to Chapter seven twenty Florida statute and covenants and restrictions set forth in their declaration encumbering all of Bayou Club. St. John's Estates' rezoning application proposes commercial use resulting in a proposed mixed-use development and other changes violating section seven twenty dot three oh two three B and seven twenty dot three oh six one C Florida statute. Allowing commercial use in Bayou Club directly violates their recorded declaration since it conflicts with our covenant against commercial use and would effectively remove such lots from being subject to Chapter seven twenty Florida statute. As a precondition to the changes proposed in the rezoning application, one hundred percent of the owners in Bayou Club and lieners would have to vote to amend Bayou Club's declaration. There have been no such amendments proposed to or by the membership at large, and Bayou Club has never had any intention on proposing the same. If the county were to approve the rezoning application, it would place Bayou Club in the position of enforcing their declarations, prohibitions against uses set forth in the rezoning application. Alternatively, approving the rezoning application could amount to a de facto and illegal amendment of the declaration violating Florida statutes. In summary, St. John's Estates' requests and rezoning application violates Florida law and conflicts with the longstanding use of Bayou Club. Approving the same under current conditions would force Bayou Club into taking legal action. Be advised that St. John's River Estates does not have and has never had developer or subsequent developer rights under Bayou Club's declaration in Chapter seven twenty Florida statute. Bayou Club respectfully asks that the commission summarily reject, oppose, and dispose of St. John's Estates' rezoning application proposals and requests set forth in case numbers LM nineteen dash zero zero one and PUD nineteen dash zero zero one. Do not hesitate to contact me if you have any questions or wish to discuss further. Sincerely, Seth D. Chapman.
Can I ask a question, Laura?
Yes.
Was that email, was that an email that came to the B O C C comments?
It was. It went both to Mike Brown and to that, so we covered both bases.
I think that's totally inappropriate, because what we did was we just wrote a, we just read a five-minute letter that should have been approved under comments and from, we've done previously under comments and communications, so, and it's a letter that has no potency on what's going on in here today at all. So basically, I think that should have been put in the notebook under messages sent to us and sent to the proper venue, which is the Planning Commission, not here. I mean, is that still in the Planning Commission stages, or is it coming to us? I don't really wanna open it up. I thought maybe you knew if you don't.
I just checked with Legal before coming into the meeting.
It's not coming to us today, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that. Just make sure that Mike Brown gets a copy of it, where he can take it to the proper venue.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Rawls.
When did they send that?
This one was sent June ninth, and when I checked with Legal before coming, it did go to Planning Commission, but because it was sent to B O C C meeting comments as well, we felt it covered the basis to read it in here as well.
I think, in my opinion, it really needs to go to Legal. They need to deal with it way before it gets to us. They got, they got more than their three minutes worth.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Is that all you have, Laura? Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda and ask, is there any items on the consent agenda the Commissioner would like removed for discussion? I'll start with Commissioner Pickens.
I have none.
Commissioner Harvey.
Item A and E. Sorry, item A and E, Mr. Chairman.
A and E?
Yeah, there's the amendment.
I know, yeah. A and E, okay. Commissioner Goddard.
I have none.
Commissioner Rawls.
I'd like to discuss C.
C?
Yes.
Okay.
So that leaves B and D.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to pass B and D.
I move that we approve items B and D as presented on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Item A, Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll make this really brief. Appreciate the opportunity to bring the CARES Act funding agreement, Mr. Chairman, to this board as you did. What gives me a little bit of heartburn, and I realize that this is a language that they put in from Department Emergency Management, but on page twenty-five, which would be page two, Mr. Commando of our documents here, says agreement was in effect on March one. I would like for that, I don't mind signing that letter, having our chairman sign it, but I don't want the public to think that that money has been set aside since March one, because it hasn't. It just got set aside a few weeks ago. So I don't like that date, but I think we can clean it up with a really good cover letter that says, based on your date that you came out a few weeks ago, we are signing it on that, for that date.
Mr.
I'm sorry?
Were you done?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
There's not, that's not an option. And the reason it's not an option is they sent this to sign for me to sign electronically.
I got it.
There's not gonna be a cover letter, there's not gonna be anything. You either sign it or don't sign it. That's your option. I mean, I know, Commissioner, it rubbed like I told you at the last meeting. It rubbed me real raw, a lot of it does, but we got two options. Sign it or don't sign.
Then I make a, then I'll say a recommendation should be that we sign it, but we also forward an email up there that, based on the date that you released the money, that's what we're, 'cause I don't want anybody out there to go, y'all been sitting on this money since March one? No, we haven't, and we just got approved to get it a couple of weeks ago.
And, and I think we can explain that anytime that somebody does ask that question. My understanding of why that date was put into place is so that people who have made expenditures or people that have needs to be able to spend that money expands the window for the time period of when they can show purchasers, invoices, or things of that nature.
I'm good with that, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Chairman, I move item A for approval.
I'll second it, but I have a comment.
Motion in a second to move item A forward under discussion. I'd just like to say, we had a big discussion on this at the last meeting. I still don't think there's a lot of clarity, but I think there's enough clarity at this point to move this funding agreement forward. I think that's a good idea. We still have plenty of time in between now and, and the, and when the funds actually arrive to come up with a more solid plan and what is legal and isn't legal, and to do a little better and a little more planning. I think most of us were in the webinar last week with Florida Association of Counties when our federal lobbyist was making the presentation, Gavin Suggs was making the presentation, and basically he says, sign your funding agreements, get your money, put it in the bank, and take a breath.
That's right.
You know, by then, maybe you'll get a little more guidance and a little more clarity on what's going on, instead of, but go ahead and get the process started. So personally, this Commissioner feels like a lot better about signing it today than I did at the last meeting, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Rawls.
At the last meeting, I said I would reach out to Cheryl Lynch, and she's agreed to come in this afternoon at the workshop and talk to us for a few minutes, if nothing else, in her public comment about what, how they can help us get this under control. So I don't have any heartburn about it. If, worst case, you know, we can always give the money back and not expend it, but I don't have problems drawing it down. And I think that it would behoove us to get something on our website sooner than later that would explain that we are bringing the money in and that we are trying to facilitate getting the money out, in whatever form that's gonna be, to whoever it's gonna go to, that we're, you know, just put out there that we're working through this, and...
I appreciate any help we can get, I really do. I know that the chambers reached out, Ms. Lynch has reached out, there's been multiple people reach out for help. We have a team that we're putting in play, that we have in place. We're not putting them in place. We have them in place that's looking... in place, we have them in place, that's looking into this very diligently to try and determine the proper direction for us to take, where we don't spend money that we can't claim for CARES, that we don't have on a program, you know, and so, you know, there's a lot of ideas that are coming in that I've talked to, that I've come up with different ones, and some of those ideas are very, you know, come up with a money to pay the senior citizens that haven't been, that have been COVID-related, that haven't been paid to date, because there's certain things you can and can't do. Micro businesses, that may be one, but we've, all these programs have to be developed, and I assure you that between the CDC and, or the CB, Small Business Development Center, and the chamber, and our team, we're going to come up with any program we can to legally help our community with this CARES Act fund. We're going to work diligently at it, but this is the first step. So with a motion on the table, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next one is item number C, Commissioner Rawls.
I just, the agreement sounds a little bit restrictive. There is some ambiguity to it, and it says, you know, contingent upon availability of funds, understand that, but on the boat ramps themselves, what are we really obligated to do on our part as a cooperative?
Who would you like to take that, Kevin? Mr. Stevens, could you come forward? Were you able to hear the question?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner, the key thing is in the project sites at the back. The easy way to look at it is, we handle everything above the water, like the piers and stuff like that, we take care of the mowing, any of those things, and then F W C comes in and they take care of the issues that are in the water itself going out. We just had this issue a couple of weeks ago with Elgin Grove, a customer who made a complaint about having nails or something inside of the water, puncturing tires. We contacted F W C, they came out, they went into the water, examined everything, they couldn't find anything that was there, and they took care of it. So it's basically everything from the water line down, they take care of, everything outside of the water is ours.
Okay. But we're, if we don't have the means to maintain the parking lot, the lighting, as they say, and if it's financially restrictive for us, we're not obligated to do anything correct. They can't call someone and say, look, you guys said you're going to maintain twelve parking spots on Brown's Landing, and looks like it's not maintained.
That's right, and that's covered in there. It says that if it's restrictive like that, that we can work a deal with them, we can contact them.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm good.
Would you make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve, item C.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve item C. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Harvey, item E.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a little clarification, if staff could come and help me out. Basically, this is COVID-related expenses that Blue Cross and Blue Shield, it appears to, are waiving any cost sharing, so if we sign this document, our cost sharing is waived for COVID-related expenses, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, I usually email.
Commissioner, before they start, if I may.
You may.
I've already signed one of these, and it's gone, and it's up till, help me with the date, Angela.
End of the month.
End of this month. All this does is extend the one that y'all have already allowed me to sign, so to make it to where we can go further in, further into the FEMA monies, I think, or the COVID monies.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, if you would.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval for item E.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries. Sorry for making you walk up here.
Good to see you, though.
A long walk.
Welcome to our new H R director, been here a week. Okay, with that, we're going to move into code enforcement, item A.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning, Thomas. Is that your bodyguard you got there with you?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure who is and who isn't.
Yeah, really.
The first thing that we have on the agenda is a fine reduction request for a code case two thousand thirteen, one eighty-eight. Owner's Michael Lee, one four two West Oak Circle Drive, Interlock in Florida. The case was opened for a care premises. The case was taken for a lien in February two thousand fifteen. The original owner is now deceased and the property had previously gone into probate. The property is now compliant as of May twenty-six, two thousand twenty, and the owner's requesting a fine reduction in order to sell the property.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Rawls.
So in reading this, I think, following our, what we've done in the past, reducing the administrative monthly by eight hundred and fifty would reduce the fine to one thousand four hundred and fourteen, and I would move that we reduce the fine to fourteen hundred and fourteen dollars and give them ninety days to pay.
Commissioner, I think before we make a motion, I've got to call for a public comment because this is a hearing, and I believe it is, so it needs to be treated like a hearing. So I think we have Mr. Key here that is, came today to represent the owners, I'm assuming. Please come forward, John, come on up if you would, and give us your name and address for the record. I mean, you know the spiel.
John Key, four fifteen St. John's Avenue, Palatka. I do represent Mr. Michael Lee, who is the father of the deceased owner. He and his wife Karen, Mr. Michael and Karen Lee are the parents of the deceased owner. They lived in Connecticut, so they really, and, you know, they're elderly, they didn't have a whole lot of opportunity to come down and take care of this immediately. There is a man, Mr. Opsel, who is, who's actually funded the money to bring this property into compliance, and there is a sale awaiting the removal of this lien, and he intends to, I believe, move in and fix the place up. It's in a nice, it borders a nice area out there, and I believe it's a good thing to go ahead and go with the staff recommendation. I agree with Commissioner Rawls that the monthly fee is, if it could be waived, that would certainly help put money into the property, which could, you know, be well-used. I appreciate the Commissioner's consideration on this.
Thank you, Mr. Key. Okay, now we can take your motion, I think. Is there any further public comment on this case? Now we can take your motion, Commissioner Rawls.
Make a motion that we reduce the fine by eight hundred and fifty dollars to one thousand four hundred and fourteen.
We have a motion and a second to reduce the staff recommendation by eight hundred and fifty dollars. I'm going back to that page, I wish we, I think we should state a amount certain.
Ninety days.
How much?
With ninety days to pay.
With ninety days to pay. What was, what is that number?
One thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars.
One thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars. So I have a second. Commissioner Harvey, I believe. Yes, sir, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. The next case is a code case two thousand nine oh oh two eight nine, along with two others.
Yes, sir, I was contacted by a gentleman that wanted to buy some properties, and we have liens that are attached to these properties he's trying to purchase due to our cases. He's, was not available to come today, so I told him that I would present it, this is more like a citizen's request. This is not something that Putnam County Code Enforcement suggests. When there's three, three or four cases, if you want me to be more specific and get into details about what the fines are owed and.
I don't know that we have to yet, Thomas. I think what we'll do is let the public have comment if they want any, and then we'll discuss it amongst us, and if you remain available to answer any questions on it, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to ask, does anybody from the public would like to speak on this citizen's request? That being said, I don't know if the Commissioners had the opportunity to read the chain of emails that was attached to this, especially from our attorney that basically says, if we allow this to happen, then what we've done is, and I'm not going to, I'm going to try to paraphrase, and that's scary, so Rich, jump up and down over there if I go to stepping on your toes, okay? So basically, if I understand it, he said that we're fixing to rewrite things tremendously, and if we do this, we'll have no way of collecting future deals. That's the reason it attaches to everything, because it makes people want to go fix their code violations. So this Commissioner, even though I can't make a motion on it, this Commissioner would highly recommend that we listen to our counsel on this and deny this request.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Harvey.
That we follow staff recommendation to not allow the partial lien release on this item.
Second.
We have a motion and multiple seconds, take your pick, Debbie. Is there any further discussion?
Under discussion, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I agree with Mr. Commando, this is trying to negotiate in bad faith, you know, putting the cart way before the horse, and, you know, asking us to look at a hundred and twenty or thirty thousand dollars worth of lien, or fine reductions. Yeah, if they would look at us historically and what we've been doing, they might get some comfort, maybe, but this is where they got to take the risk with their money and see what happens.
Is there any further discussion on this case? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, guys, for coming today. Thank you, Thomas.
We take a break.
Sure, yes, sir, three minutes and twenty-seven, three minutes and twenty-seven seconds.
Thank you.
Land Development Code Amendment, when we're rewriting the Land Development Code at the moment.
Yes, sir, this is a request made by an applicant to change just a little bit of the language to assist the property owner in being able to use his borrow pit area in a more advantageous way for him.
And it's something he needs done in the expedite, to expedite that, is that what he's needing?
Yes, sir, his special use permit was expiring, and this is in line to assist him.
So, a special use permit won't get him where he needs to be at the moment? He needs the land use change and a special use permit?
That's correct.
Okay. Please continue then.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Harvey.
I agree with you, I was wondering the same question, I asked Mr. Brown this earlier. But I have some conditions I'd like to talk about. We're not conditions, some recommendations. As we move forward on this, I don't want this to be the last stop on this item, because I was talking to a few borrow pit owners on the way in that didn't have any knowledge of this. I think after tomorrow night's meeting, the Planning Commission meeting on the comp plan changes that are gonna happen, this needs to come back to us, because I still don't feel like it's completely right. So what we do today is fine, but I really wanna see this coming back to us and all those changes again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Pickens, and then Commissioner Roig.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Commissioner Harvey, because I think this really needs to be looked at, and some, and then maybe has been some input from all the borrow pit owners, were current or past, or maybe future, to make sure we're very consistent, and we get this right when we redo our comp plan.
Yeah. Mike Brown, Planning Manager, this is, clearly, this wouldn't be, we can address this again when we update the entire Land Development Code, or in the interim if need be. But this, as Jim stated, this is a request by an applicant for an amendment to allow them to move forward with their plans, and rather than waiting for the entire amendment to come forward, this is before you today. But clearly, we can address it, any changes we need at any time in the future.
Go ahead and make, or, excuse me, Commissioner Roig.
I think you just answered my question, but my question's gonna be, why not wait? We're not that far away from having the revised land use in the comp plan.
The applicant may be best to respond to that, but my understanding is they have a need to make the amendments they've requested somewhat immediately to address the predicament that they're in. The reality is presently, I don't wanna get into too much in the presentation, but they, the applicant purchased...
Let me, we're gonna hear this today.
Yeah.
And so, we were just trying to determine before, were we gonna hear this, so we are. We're gonna hear the case, so if you'd let Jim make his presentation, then I'll go ahead and call the applicant up here at that time and let them talk about it and what have you, and then we'll take it from there. I just wanted to make sure we were properly doing this before we moved into it. So, Jim, please proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Jim Troyano, and I'm a member of the planning staff here in Putnam County. I'd like to present to you a brief presentation on CA 20-001. It's an application from EDA engineers, surveyors, and planners who represent Mr. Tim Renfro. An application, as I mentioned, has been submitted on behalf of Mr. Renfro. He is a Putnam County landowner and a holder of a special use permit to operate a borrow area in Putnam County. The request from the applicant, as well as from staff, are to, for text amendments to Article III Supplemental Use Regulation, Section 3.02.09 Borrow Areas, as well as the definition in Section 3.02.31 titled Mining. This did come in front of the Planning Commission on May the 13th. They voted unanimously to recommend these changes to the B O C C, listed in this presentation, as well as proposed ordinance. Mr. Chair, if I may, to make this clear, we have shown the information that will be striking out in red with a strike through, as well as red with an underline would be new language. On behalf of the applicant, they have asked in Section B, subsection three, to strike the sentence, or the portion of the sentence, or borrow areas that operate or intended to operate for more than ten years. Their next request in Section C Permits, in one, at the very end, is to eliminate up to borrow areas of ten years and ending that sentence with periods. In number three, they're asking to strike the last portion of that sentence, which contain the sum total of the prior years of operating the borrow area shall be counted towards the total life of the borrow area operation under paragraph two above. And finally, under the definitions for mining, striking the last sentence, for the purpose of this code, a borrow area is greater than thirty acres in size or open for more than ten years shall be considered a mine. Mr. Chair, staff did have an opportunity to review this, and we did speak with other borrow area owners, and we have identified some suggested language we'd like to add. In the definition of a borrow area, we have added a sentence at the end, "As long as spoil piles remain on the same parcel, digging upon for personal use with a lawfully obtained permit does not constitute a borrow area." A little bit of housekeeping, we saw where there was some errors in how the previous Land Development Code was numbered. Instead of being five, six, and seven, they were labeled A, B, and C, and we're just asking you to allow us to make that change, to make it more consistent. Nothing was changed from a substantive language standpoint. For permits required, we asked to strike the word "and," and the end of that sentence, "up to the borrow area maximum of ten years." Continuing, we added just a clause in the, in part two, at the end of the last sentence, or revocation of the current permit. So, it's just adding those few words to that last sentence. We did ask for a complete addition for number four, which was not included in the current Land Development Code. And I'll read it, "If the applicant of a borrow area processes materials on site, which typically include sorting and grinding, grading of materials, this activity will require a permit from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection's Mining and Mitigation Program." And in five, we added this last portion, "If the applicant's borrow area or property permitted by the special use permit is to be used to collect construction or tree debris, the applicant must obtain a permit from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection or Applicable Water Management District prior to said activity. There will be no requirement of the applicant after the S U P is issued for the area to amend, the S A P, other than providing the proper permits to Planning and Development Services." And under Section D, titled Site Work Permit Application Submittal Requirements, we're asking for a new section, E. "If the borrow area is to be used to collect construction or tree debris, a copy of the permit from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection or Applicable Water Management District, and provided to County Planning and Development Services prior to said collection." And, Mr. Chair, that concludes not only the applicant's request, but staff's request to amend borrow areas, as well as the definition for mining.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, thank you for your presentation. Basically, this is going to allow materials to be brought in. My understanding is a lot of these borrow pits areas out in my district missed out on opportunities with State Road 20 widening, and the debris is now being burned or hauled away, mostly burned, where this could've been stored on property. Am I correct? Okay. How long is this process going to take someone, though? That's gonna be my question, because we have to have a second reading, then it has to go back, does it go back to zoning board now?
It just goes to your second reading, and that will be the final reading.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, and instead of changing everything right now, can the board just decide to waive the existing borrow pits to be allowed to use the material? Because it's really basically putting material on the land right now. So could the board just waive that for existing ones, instead of going through the whole process?
I don't, I think I'll have to ask Rich Commando that one, mainly because I don't think the board has the ability to waive their comprehensive plan, they got to change the plan or amend the plan, I don't think we can just waive it and not pay attention to it.
No, I'm, yeah.
But if I could ask Mr. Commando to comment.
I agree with that, I don't, I'm not aware of a waiver provision that is in your plan.
I was just trying to move that process up a little faster, but since it's a second reading, I'm sure we can schedule one very soon to handle that. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Will this be part of the new comp plan?
Yes.
So we're making a change for them now, but it'll also be for the next fifteen years?
And adopted and reviewed when we look at the remainder of the comp plan, yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Good. Okay, like Commissioner Harvey said, that I'm gonna ask the applicant if she'd like to come forward, and if you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Commission. My name is Stephanie Sutton, and I work for EDA. We're out of Gainesville, we're located at 720 Southwest Second Avenue in Gainesville, Florida, and we're here working with Mr. Renfro, with his borrow area here in Putnam County. One of his concerns, and our primary objective with our text amendment, is to extend the life of borrow areas beyond ten years, without having to go into a different permitting process that would be required for a mine. The operation isn't changing, it's going to remain consistent. It's very common that these areas operate beyond ten years, and he's coming up on his special use permit renewal, and having the site pass that ten-year mark, and so that's what's really important to us. As far as this amendment, we did meet with staff, they've been extremely helpful, they informed us that the Land Development Code was upcoming, but we talked about our timeframe and having to renew this special use permit, and because of that, we decided we needed to put in a private application for this Land Development Code Amendment. I'm here if you all have any questions.
Any questions at this time?
Hopefully, that addresses your concerns.
I do.
Mr. Harvey?
I thank you very much, I forgot your name.
Stephanie.
Stephanie, I thought that was, I didn't wanna call you the wrong.
Yep, Stephanie Sutton.
My understanding is, if we're, and I'm hung up on material being brought in, so, believe me. But doesn't the other agencies allow this to happen by their permit, like Water Management and DEP? And we're kinda not allowing that, so is that how you understand that to be, too?
So, Chair, there is a form required to register with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to be able to take yard waste, but it's a very simple process. It's basically a registration form, it's not a complicated, you know, site plan review or anything like that. So, there is a process, but it's not complicated, and that'll be a part of what we're doing when we renew this particular special use permit, we will be adding that as a use. But it should be very, a very easy thing for other owners to do with Florida DEP, as well as with this code change in the county, it'll make it easy.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. So, Jim, this was recommended by the Planning Commission, and it's being recommended by you to go ahead and start this round of changes because of the timeframe from the applicant?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Okay, good, thank you. Chair, entertain a motion and a further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we pass this resolution, as staff has presented, to approve the language changes approved by Putnam County Planning Commission to Land Development Code 3.02.09 Borrow Areas and 3.02.31 Mines.
Second.
If we have a motion and a second, under discussion, I'd just like to say that before this can be signed by the chairman, we have to have a 505 public hearing with no, no quicker than after ten days, is that correct, Julie?
We will, staff will advertise that as soon as we can.
I just wanted to know the applicant and understand that I can't sign this today. We have one more hearing to go through, and then we should be fine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Does this require a state review?
Excuse me?
Does the state not have to review this?
Oh, no, does this have to go to state for review, or is it a small scale amendment?
No, this is just a Land Development Code amendment, so it's all yours.
Yeah.
We send the resolutions to, or ordinance amendments to the, to the state also, but this is a act of the county commission.
Okay.
Good deal.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Harvey.
Could we set a date of the first meeting in July, maybe at 505? Our first board meeting on Tuesday, and get this over with?
That's, we can do that.
That's up to the chair.
Fine with me, Commissioner Harvey. Here to please, sir.
You are, sir.
Makes sense. Yeah, okay, can we do it then?
We can get it done by then, let's shoot for that, Mike, if we can try to get it done by then.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion on the floors, are there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're gonna move on to the zoning map amendment R2 to C2, case number R20-003. Mr. Brown?
All right, Mr. Chairman, Mike Brown, Planning and Development Services. R220-003 is a zoning map amendment from, for a parcel approximately 0.41 acres in size from R2 to commercial retail C2. The applicant is James and Lisa Crosby. Parcel is located at the corner of Cheyenne Avenue and State Road 20, which is roughly about a mile, mile and a quarter east of the municipal boundary of Interlock and unincorporated Putnam County. The parcel is designated urban reserve on the future land use map, and as I indicated, it's approximately 0.41 acres in size. It has approximately 200 foot of frontage on State Road 20 and about 75 feet of frontage on Cheyenne Avenue. There are no wetlands and no special flood hazard areas on this parcel. There's a aerial showing you the parcel, and as I indicated, the future land use is urban reserve, and here is the current zoning of the parcel and the parcels around it. As I indicated, the future land use is urban reserve, the C2, the uses allowed in the C2 zoning district are allowed in the, in the urban reserve future land use. According to the Land Development Code, C2 zoning district is for light intensity commercial uses, which have access to a paved local road or a higher functional classification road. State Road 20 is designated a principal arterial. It has an adopted level of service D, and there is adequate capacity on State Road 20 to support any development that would be allowed on the subject parcel. There are commercial zoned parcels and uses to the west and to the south of the existing parcel, or the subject parcel. Staff finds that the request to rezone the parcel from R2 to C2 is consistent with the comprehensive plan, is consistent with the locational requirements for C2 zoning found in the Land Development Code, is compatible with the surrounding uses. At its May 13, 2020 meeting, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning of the subject parcel. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from R2 to commercial retail C2 for the subject parcel. Do you have any questions of staff at this point?
Any questions of staff at this time? Is the app, okay, Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. This is a minor little detail, but a few, I'd say about maybe three years ago, we ran into an issue with DOT, and they were going to pave Cheyenne and didn't, and it kind of was back and forth. We, the county put some lime rock there at 20 in Cheyenne, but DOT had some water standing there, and they drained it down that right of way. And I wanna make sure that that's still there, because that water has got to get down to that little pond area. Because if it doesn't, it just sits right there, and I don't think DOT's ever going to come back and pave that section like they said they were.
On Cheyenne, or?
Going to the east, from Cheyenne going east.
Yeah.
Along Highway 20.
Along, there's, there's still drainage.
Yes.
There.
Yeah.
And it will remain there. Any development that would come on that parcel would have to go through Development Review Committee, and we would address the drainage issue.
Well, the only reason I brought it up, it took us a long time, but DBI finally came out there probably maybe four months ago, and took a backhoe and dug that area. So with DBI doing that, that now puts the state, you know, as of doing it, because that's their contractor. So, that's the only question I have, thank you.
Mr. Harvey, is the applicant here today?
I do not.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this case? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this case? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close. You want to speak to it? Do you have an email? Okay. Would you please read it?
We are John F. Steiner and Pamela M. Steiner and are property owners in the residential area adjacent to the above-mentioned property. Our property is located at one twenty-one Reeves Avenue, Interlocken, which is across the pond from the above-mentioned property in question. According to the application for rezoning from the owners of the property in question, James and Lisa Crosby, they are requesting this rezoning in order to put a portable food truck on the property. According to our research, the Crosbys are also the owners of Little Caesar's Saloon just across Cheyenne Avenue from the above-mentioned property. Our questions and concerns regarding this request are as follows. One, will the proposed portable food truck be serving alcoholic beverages? Two, what will be the hours that this portable food truck will be open for business? Three, where will patrons of the food truck be able to park? As it does not appear that there is much access to the property for vehicles to enter and properly park and exit safely at that intersection. We are concerned about the noise factor that such an outdoor facility will create, especially if consumers are permitted to drink alcoholic beverages during late evening hours in an outdoor setting. Even though we are across the pond from this site, noise carries quite a distance over open water. If this proposed portable food truck is open for business during the late evening hours, it will create a noise nuisance for surrounding homes in this residential community. If, in fact, and in reality, the portable food truck is intended for daytime slash early evening use only and if it is not going to be selling alcoholic beverages at that site or permitting late evening slash night usage thereof, then we would not have any objections. However, how can one guarantee that the patrons of the Crosby's Little Caesar's bar establishment will not be using that outdoor facility for their outdoor activities after hours? It is our concern that this is going to become an area for evening outdoor activities that will become a source of much noise and disruption of the peace and quiet of our residential community. Therefore, we would like to register our concerns and objections to the approval of this request unless such guarantees can be made and will be appropriately maintained and enforced. Thank you for your consideration of these concerns and objections.
Do you have any more, is that it?
Not for that case. I have several for the next one.
Okay. All right, good deal. Number one, I don't think by C two by rights, you could serve alcoholic beverages, can you, Mike?
Off the top of my head, I believe it would, and it depends on if it was a restaurant that served alcohol is allowed as long as less than fifty percent of the sales are alcohol. That would be allowed in C two.
Did that question come up in the Planning Commission when they recommended unanimously to move this forward?
That discussion did not. There was no, nobody voiced or sent in any objections. So this is the first that staff has heard of that issue. But again, it's rezoning to C two and what would be allowed in that? And it could be, I mean, there are a number of things that are allowed in C two. Recognize and I pointed out in response earlier to Commissioner Harvey's question, whatever goes out there has to go through Development Review Committee. And so there's the ability to look at it through there. Anything that would trigger a special use permit or would not be allowed in C two would have even additional conditions placed on it. Well, if it's not allowed in C two, it wouldn't be able to go there. And it's hard to specifically respond because we don't know what the end use is going to be.
Well, and before I start calling on commissioners who've lit up the screen, I'd just like to say that when we pass this to C two, then anything that's allowed in C two can go there because there's no contract zoning. So we can't say you can have C two, but you can't serve alcohol. That ain't legal. You can do it in a way that through Development Review where you could maybe do some of that, but you're not, this board doesn't have the authority to do contract zoning. So is that correct, Mr. Commando?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. And I was gonna make mention of that too, that the change follows the land and not just the person. But I think the letter brought up some good points here, Mr. Brown. You're gonna do a land development review committee on this pretty soon when they bring you in what they want to do? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, when we update the land development code, one of the things we're gonna look at is all our zoning districts and what is allowed and not allowed in each of those districts.
Well, I think the person in the letter made a good comment that there is insufficient parking, in my opinion. But if they can make it work where you're not parking on the street there. But you're gonna address that with them when they apply for.
Yeah, that's always looked at in the, in.
The Development Review.
Development Review Committee.
Yes.
Is parking. And we have standards and whatever they do out there has to, at a minimum, meet those parking standards.
Will you do me a favor to make sure those pine trees are picked up on the side of the road? They've harvested them and left them on, sitting on the side of that road there. So before, ask them that question because it needs to get done. Thank you. That's the only questions I have.
Mr. Rawls? So, while I sympathize with the person that wrote the letter, based on the information that we have and what our code allows right now as far as doing the land use, I think that we pretty much are obligated to consider the land use change. And they could put a hair salon out there under C two as well. You know, the business licensing has been one of my pet peeves. I think we need to get back in that business and that would be another way to control this. But I think at this point, I would be in favor of accepting the staff's recommendation to approve this just based purely on what we've got, not on what's speculative.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Turner. And I agree, we have to go with what the C two or whatever the zoning we're gonna move it to would go to. But Mike, if a food truck, I mean, can you answer this? If they want to put a food truck, do they have to go through DRC and then have adequate parking and have a restroom area and those type of things that are probably needed? And our concerns are theirs, along with the ours.
Yeah, I mean, yes. I mean, it would have to go through DRC. I'll just be honest with you. One of the things that, from staff's standpoint, and when we update the land development code, we've never really addressed real, from my perspective, food trucks because they were never the thing before. I intend to probably have a section in the code in Article three specifically addressing food trucks because they are sort of nebulous in our code presently. But it would require, whatever goes out there, because it's a vacant parcel, we'll have to go through Development Review Committee.
Thank you.
One more comment. When you say food truck, you are including trailers, correct? Because I hate to press but trucks. And somebody pull a trailer in there and say, well, it doesn't meet the definition.
Yeah, mobile eateries.
Yeah, mobile restaurants.
Mobile eateries.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's what we call them in San Mateo.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make.
Mobile eateries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Harvey?
Okay, I'd like to move the adoption of the requested rezoning of the subject parcel from R two to C two on case number R twenty dash zero zero three.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next is item C, seven C, the zoning map amendment from AG two PUD for Trails End Outdoor Planning Unit Development.
Mr. Chairman and Commission, PUD nineteen dash zero zero three is an application by Keith and Jocelyn Valentine to rezone approximately thirty-six point nine acres from agriculture zoning to planned unit development. The purpose of the project is to provide a mix of recreational, commercial, and residential uses on a total of three parcels of property. The future land use of the three parcels are AG two and rural residential. Zoning for the entire three parcels is agriculture. And hold on, we're having some technical difficulty here. Yeah, something's happened to the, the computer's locked up here. So let me go to the, to the paper copy.
We're gonna start calling it IT Tuesday is what we're gonna do.
Luckily, I've got a paper copy.
Jacob, I believe our Zoom meetings went better than our live meetings.
There we go. Thank you.
Yeah, did you see what button he just pushed? Mash that one next time it messes up.
Just shout it out, Jacob.
Here's an aerial of the, of the parcel, of the proposed project area outlined in blue. And as I indicated earlier, there's three parcels totaling thirty-six point nine acres. Specifically, the proposal of the project would include eighteen RV sites, ten primitive campsites, three residential units. One of them is for the applicant owner of the property. It would include resource and activity-based recreational uses, equestrian uses, events uses such as weddings, reunions, and retreats, and a commercial landscape, the applicant's commercial landscape business, which he received approval for through special use permit sixteen dash oh oh two, which the zoning board approved in twenty sixteen. Here are the future land uses. The largest parcel, which is approximately thirty acres, is AG two. The two smaller parcels are rural residential. There is AG two, future land use north of it and rural residential to the east and south with AG one to the west. And as I indicated, in surrounding the entire parcel, parcels and this parcel and the subject parcels is zoned agriculture. Policy in the comp plan A one nine three B five allows PUD zoning in any of the future land use designations. If the PUD is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comp plan, meets criteria of the land development code and the PUD does not increase the intensity or density of uses of the underlying land use category. And as I indicated, the three parcels have mixed future land use. The rural residential land, future land use allows for fish camps, campgrounds, and other camps. The agriculture two future land use allows for both activity-based, resource-based recreational activities in addition to rural recreational uses. The uses that are proposed for the PUD do meet the definitions. And in the comp plan, for the uses allowed in the two residential uses, rural residential and AG two. There are, the land development code requires certain criteria to be met or conditions to be met for the, for a PUD zoning. One, and the first one is that the PUD, evidence has to be presented that the PUD is justified. In response to that requirement, the project as proposed is a mixed use including overnight RV and primitive camping, commercial uses, and single-family residential uses. The uses proposed are consistent with the rural residential and AG future land use. And the use, the mix of uses would not fit into any of our single zoning districts. Thus, the request for a PUD. And staff believes that that is, there's evidence to justify the PUD rezoning. There are eight criteria also presented in the land development code that each PUD requested zoning must meet. And I will go over the response rather than read each of the individual criteria. The uses proposed for the Trails End Outdoor PUD fall primarily within the definition of rural recreational uses as found in the comp plan. The density and intensity of the types of, and types of uses are consistent with the comp plan and the land use designation. The primary purpose of the project is to provide opportunity for resource-based recreational activities, making utilizations of surrounding civic culture and agricultural lands and uses. There are required setbacks and buffering that are set forth in the proposed agreement. And the restrictions on amplified sound should avoid nuisance, including noise and odor to adjacent property owners. The comp plan and the land development code does not count RV parks as, or does deem them as non-residential so that they are not used in measuring and determining density. The three residential units that are proposed in the agreement are consistent with the density limitations for the future land use designations. There's adequate open space and recreation provided to meet the demand of the project. The county requirements for stormwater management will limit any hazards from flooding and erosion or other dangers on or off the site. The project has access to State Road twenty via Willis Road. Willis is a county-maintained dirt road. All proposed uses within the project will have access via an internal road network to Willis Road and then to State Road twenty. All parking will be, all project parking will be internal to the project. And all parking will be a minimum of one hundred feet from any property line. The project will be provided wastewater service from a Department of Health permitted onsite septic system. And potable water will be provided from a public supply well permitted by the appropriate state agency. And staff finds that there is adequate solid waste capacity in the county landfill and other service capacities to meet the demands generated by the proposed project. As I indicated, there is an agreement with every PUD. There's a developer's agreement or a PUD agreement. The agreement, just real briefly, does limit the development to eighteen, to a maximum of eighteen RV sites, three single-family residential units, ten primitive campsites, the landscaping business, the ability to have events out there and resource and activity-based recreational uses. There is a one hundred-foot buffer between the PUD boundaries and the RV sites, any onsite parking and any storage of equipment. And water and sanitary sewer will be onsite and permitted by the appropriate state agency. Staff finds that the applicant has presented evidence that the rezoning to the PUD is justified. The proposed PUD in development is consistent with the future land use designation. The proposed project is compatible with existing uses in the area. Development is consistent with the requirements for PUD zoning and consistent with the comp plan goals, objectives, and policies. The Planning Commission at its May thirteenth, twenty twenty meeting voted seven one to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning to PUD. And staff recommends approval of the request to rezone the three parcels totaling thirty-six point nine acres from AG to planned unit development, actually, yeah, from agriculture zoning to planned unit development, subject to the inclusion of the Trails End and Outdoor PUD development agreement as part of that recommendation and the part of the rezoning. Any questions of staff?
Any questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Are we under the ex parte communication on this?
Took the words out of my mouth.
Yes. Yeah, I think we probably ought to do.
Yeah, it is.
Disclosures?
Were there any ex parte communications on this case?
I have brought Mr. Valentine in to speak to you, recommending the PUD, and I just want the audience to know that I was part of that.
Also talked to Mr. Valentine over a period of time. The comments we had would not change my recommendation one way or the other. I think that's what we're supposed to say.
I do have had ex parte communications, and it would not affect my vote.
Awesome.
I did also. It won't affect my decision.
Okay. Basically, the answer to that is Keith lit us all up. So.
Mr. Chairman, I do have some other questions.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Before I start taking public comment.
Mr. Brown, the PUD changes, just for the audience's sake, and those have to come back before the Board of County Commissioners. So if Mr. Valentine wanted to change his PUD, to amend it to something different, or to change, increase it or something, it would come back here for another public hearing and all that.
Yes. Anything to change that, what's in that agreement, would require the same process he went through. Planning Commission and then the Board of County Commissioners for adoption.
And you know I'm a big advocate of the PUD only because it's kind of an overlay of a piece of property that allows people to identify right up front what they want to do to it, not later on as they're going through it. I think it's one of our best tools that we have in the tool chest because I think your words said this wouldn't fit in any of our codes, no matter where we were trying to go with it.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so, thank you. And I don't want to sound like our code is outdated. I just think that things evolve faster than what we can anticipate them evolving. You wouldn't have thought that this would be a great idea or a bad idea years ago, and our codes just didn't address it then. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
You're welcome, Commissioner. I, you know, I think the best thing for a planned unit development are situations where other things don't fit because you're looking at a mixed use of things that you'd have to have five different zonings within this planned unit development to make this work. So there's some counties that don't allow planned unit developments in the state. I don't know how they get anything done. I don't know how they do economic development, ecotourism, or agritourism. I don't see how they get any of that done. I know there's an agritourism law that allows you to do some of it, but it doesn't allow you to do everything that's within this planned unit development. So, you know, I commend Mr. Valentine for coming forward and trying to get this thing done in the correct manner. Commissioner Rawls?
I agree with everything you're saying. And I did have one person that listed to reach out to me, and his concern was that he thought that this was going to be tied to a development that would happen out of Clay County. And I told him, I said, "If anything like that ever happened, it would have to come before the commission." Mr. Valentine has assured me that this is going to be agritourism, that he's using this to be able to bring in economic development into the county. I've heard concerns about mobile homes being brought in. So on the face, the PUD speaks for itself.
Thank you for those comments, sir. So I'm gonna open up public comment, and I'm gonna let the applicant come forward if they wish. Keith, you wish to speak, you or Jocelyn? I think we'd rather hear from her than you.
Yeah, everybody likes my wife. I'm glad I got hers. Makes life a little easier. Appreciate being able to come before you all today. As you well know, we started this a year and a half ago, and because of the challenges that we have as a county growing, it's taken this long to come to us, but I'm thankful for that. I really am. I was born and raised here in Putnam County. We grew up there on twenty-seven thousand acres where the Rodman Plantation is. That was our family. We learned a lot. We were taught a lot. We learned how to camp, fish, hike from my dad, who has passed away. He taught a lot of this to us. And that's what brings me back after all these years being gone, working in central Florida, coming back to Putnam County, spending my money here, and making my home here. I feel like I'm part of it. I always will be, and I'll die here. We purchased forty acres, or thirty-six acres, there in Hollister out of foreclosure, took a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar piece of property. And we turned it into what we have now, which is just under a million dollars we've spent on this piece of property. A house that was dilapidated, properties that was overgrown, and then turned it into a nice farm ranch operation with cattle and horses. And we want to create a place that I grew up on, and that was the Rodman Plantation, for people to come and experience what ranch life is. People have not heard what a Bob White Quail, or Whipper Will, or seen Sand Hill Cranes, or been there at night when the sun's going down, and how peaceful it is. And that's what my place is. I share it with people on Facebook. We also want to create a place for these cousins who grew up here, who've moved away all over the United States, to bring their kids back here and experience what they experienced when they were little. And so that's what we have. We've had people in from Oregon, Utah, Idaho, Pennsylvania, North Carolina. All of these people, family too, have came in and stayed with us and love it. And they don't understand what farm life's all about. When people come to Putnam and they see what we have here, our rivers, our Rodman Reservoir, all of these places, they will come back with their kids, or their kids will come here and buy and stay and make this their home, and that's what we've done, like I did. West Putnam has no, any lodging at all. There's nothing out there. When I first started this through the SUP, the Special Use Permit, you know, people were excited. They don't even know we're back there because I have not heavily marketed what I have. And my whole goal for this is, because I first started out as trying to go through the agritourism law. We went through everything, and everything that we are doing is acceptable under the agritourism law, except the RV parking, or the RV campground, and the ten primitive sites. Everything that I'm doing, the weddings set up, the family reunions, people coming in and fishing. Through the COVID nineteen, we had a nurse that came in and brought her kids. She just wanted to get away at a peaceful, quiet place, and she's brought her kids into fishing. That's what's happening. People love it because we have three stock grounds. This would be a real asset to Putnam County because it will bring money in and it will help all of us and show people, and they will be able to come back here and buy and purchase or spend their money here. So I hope that you will back us and support us. I do not want a mobile home park. I want a nice, upper-scale RV campground with eighteen families that can come in, the elderly people that can come in and ride around on their golf carts and experience what we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Any questions of Keith at this point? Doesn't look like it, Keith. Thank you. Is there anybody else present that would like to speak in favor of this case? Please come forward. Thank you, Paul.
My name is Cindy Shaw. I live at one five two Willis Road. And I just wanted to say that I understand that change can be difficult, but we have to put our faith right now in Mr. Keith, in his character, and the type of person that he is, and the type of person that we know, that we live around. Possibly a speed limit sign, or a slow children at play sign could be placed there to make everyone feel a little more comfortable about the traffic coming in down the road. But he is a man of good character, and he's been a great neighbor and good standing.
Thank you, Cindy. Is there anybody with us today that would like to speak in opposition to this case? Give me just a second. Let him do the wiping. I want to keep you as safe as we can.
Get rid of cooties.
If you'd give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Dave Aggerton. I live at one three four Willis Road. Give me just a second. I presume y'all can see the, in front of you, the PowerPoint presentations?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you for hearing me today. In an effort to save time and with social distancing with COVID nineteen going on right now, there are multiple people that oppose this PUD going on on Willis Road. So in an effort to save you time and rather than have everybody come up here, we've elected a spokesperson, which is me, to come up here and speak to you. There is a slide in here that I've listed everybody in here that is in opposition of it with their address and their telephone number, if you would like to contact them at a later date. Okay? Neighborhood issues, okay? I'm speaking from somebody that, I realize where y'all are looking at it from a monetary aspect of it. I'm looking at it for my family and where we're coming at from this and where this is gonna, where this could possibly lead us. So in bringing, two things we're gonna talk about is bringing criminal activity into the neighborhood. We don't know who these people are that are coming in here. No background checks. They could be sexual offenders from other areas, other states that we don't know about. We don't know who these people are, and this could invite the criminal element into our neighborhood. Okay? None of you live there. We live there. We have to deal with this. The second thing we're gonna talk about is the road, Willis Road, won't handle this. The road isn't big enough. The road isn't wide enough. It's not gonna, it's not gonna work out for that. I'm gonna walk around. I can't sit still. Sorry. All right, sorry. Can anybody hear me okay? Okay. Bringing criminal activity into the neighborhood. I've spoken to Mr. Valentine and Ms. Valentine about this. I don't have, personally, I don't have any problem with Keith or Jocelyn. They've always been good neighbors to me. I haven't ever had a problem with them. But I don't agree with what's going on, and that's part of being an adult. We can agree to disagree, and we can still be friends. But we don't agree with this. And when I spoke to him about this, and I said, "Who's gonna be renting this?" And it was anybody that wished to rent it. Okay? Same as if you go down here to the sleep-in. Anybody that wished to rent that, they are gonna be able to come in there and rent it. So it doesn't matter really who it is. Okay? So when we talk about different people coming in, a lot of these people could be day labors working at either GP or Seminole, or any of these other solar plants that are around. We don't know who these people are, and typically, they are in and out and not where, the type of people that we want to be. Typically, day labors, and some of you own your own businesses, typically, day lammers are people that typically can't get a job somewhere else. They can't hold a full-time job with other benefits, whether them being a convicted felon, there's other issues with them of not being able to do that, and these are the type of people that could be brought into our neighborhood. Some of these crimes that these people are committing are not limited to, but some of these. Robbery, which is also a forcible felony under Florida state law. Burglary, whether it's vehicular or residential, it's a forcible felony. Vehicle theft. Misdemeanor and petty theft. Sexual battery, also a forcible felony. Aggravated assault or battery, a forcible felony. Simple assault or battery. Domestic violence, disturbances, and/or fights within these type of things that go on. Now, with that being said, do I think that Keith and Jocelyn are gonna allow that to happen? No, probably not. He's probably gonna tell them they need to get their stuff and they need to go. Okay? Because that's just the type of person he is. But what we have to think about is what happens if he leaves that property for whatever reason? He dies, he sells the property, it goes under, or whatever. The next person that comes in there may not have his vision and take that where it needs to go and get those people out of there. So he probably won't do it, but the people that come in afterwards, we don't know what would happen. Okay? So this is the type of stuff that would be brought into our neighborhood. In looking at different RV and trailer parks within Putnam County, we pulled some information off of them.
David, sorry to bother you. How long is your presentation gonna take, do you think?
Probably about ten more minutes, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I tried to keep it, I tried to keep this under twenty slides, and I went to twenty-one. So I looked at three different RV or trailer parks within Putnam County to get some statistics on them. All of the three that I looked at are within the boundaries of Putnam County. They're not within any city limit of any municipality within the, within any, they're all just within Putnam County, okay? They'll be identified as locations one, two, and three. It really doesn't matter where they are, just by their locations. The time period I pulled these from were from June first, two thousand and eighteen, to June first, twenty twenty. Calls for service at these places. Location one had a hundred and sixty-three calls for service in two years. Location two had two hundred and five calls for service. Now, this is a totality of everything, whether this is law enforcement or EMS, a totality of all of it, two hundred and five. Location three had six hundred and sixty-four calls for service. Now, I realize that Mr. Valentine is not going to allow the criminal element to stay there, and I get that. However, he can't control what goes on, and if the sheriff's office has to respond out there, or EMS has to respond out there, or investigations have to be done out there, that is out of his control. He can't control that. So to say that, okay, well, we're not gonna have it there. Well, I don't know that we can actually say that, and I don't know anybody here can say that because we don't control what other people do. So that's my portion on that. The extra traffic on the roadway. Willis Road is a partial, two-lane, single-lane dead-end dirt road. The road is somewhat wider towards Highway twenty than narrows towards the end, i.e. where the RV trailer park will be located. All property that borders Willis Road is private. There is no public property. If there are eighteen additional family RVs, ten primitive campsites, three family residential units at the end of the road, we can expect a significant increase in traffic. So just to do a little math on that, eighteen RV sites, ten campsites, three family sites, that's thirty-one sites, okay? Most people, whenever you go somewhere, wherever you go, whether it's from your house, whether you're vacationing, wherever you're at, you're gonna leave there and return at least once. You're gonna leave, okay, and you're gonna come back. That is an additional sixty-two trips down Willis Road that the road can't handle. Just going and coming, once. That's not going to the store and coming back, and then you go out and go do wherever you want, wherever else you want to go. This doesn't make, this doesn't include making multiple trips. If you need to make multiple trips, friends and family that come and visit, that bring their vehicle, those are additional, coming and going. Children, we've all got kids, children that are of driving age that bring their vehicles down there. Or if the people, if you bring a multiple vehicle with you. You don't just bring the one that you pull your RV with. Now you have another one. And ATV and UTVs that can be used. I mean, this is rural Putnam County. Everybody drives them. I mean, let's be fair about that. I mean, that's just what's gonna happen. So my question to you is, is there enough road, enough room for two vehicles to pass pulling an RV, a boat, a trailer, or something down Willis Road? Per the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Highway Administration, lanes in a rural area are to be between nine and twelve feet wide. You can pull it up on that website right there. Everything I've got, you're more than welcome to. This PowerPoint included, so I'd be more than welcome to give that to you. So in the next several slides, you'll see, I don't have a clicker with me, but what you can see is this is Highway twenty down at the end of the slide on the left. That's Highway twenty. So what I did was I put two orange road cones on either side of the road. Then I measured it to how wide the road was. As you can see, that's seventeen point five feet across. That's at the widest point of Willis Road. This is two vehicles trying to pass on that area. Can it be done? Yes, it can. Okay, I'll tell you the good and bad of any of it. But yes, two vehicles can pass here, pulling the camper on the left and the boat on the right. Those can pass in there. Now, do you have to go into the grass to do it? Absolutely, but it can be done. The problem occurs is when you come to the S curve, okay? It's not as simple as the Planning Commission would like for you to believe that coming down this road is just a straight shot down there. No, there's an S curve in the middle of it. Well, when you come to this S curve, it's fourteen foot. Fourteen feet across that to try to pass these two vehicles. And as you can see from here, the vehicles aren't gonna pass each other without driving into somebody else's private property, okay? The property that you see on the left-hand side of both of those pictures belongs to Pete Anderson. I'm fairly confident he doesn't want people eroding his property and driving RV trailers and boats and stuff over his property just to pass on this road because it's not wide enough. Here's another comparison down. Here's another comparison down, uh, once you get further down, uh, the, the picture on the left, it would be further down towards where the RV and trailer park would be. This is fourteen point one feet, okay? Fourteen feet, one inches across this part. Can a vehicle pass here? I'll let you look at the picture and say, "Probably not, not without either wrecking or going, driving into somebody else's private property." Obvious. I think it's plainly obvious that vehicles, that two vehicles can't pass here, that this is a single-lane dirt road, uh, in the west, in west Putnam, that they're not gonna be able to pass. They're not gonna be able to pass either, one, they're gonna have to crash into each other, which obviously people aren't gonna do that, or they're gonna have to drive on private property. Driving on private property, then you're gonna endanger people's pets and their animals. I have children. I don't want, I don't want people driving into my property endangering my children that are at play. There's other people that have children that are at play there that are younger than my children and they don't want them, you know, run over or possibly animals or anything else that they have in there. So, where are these people to go? When these two vehicles meet on Willis Road, where, where do they go? Does one back up to Highway twenty and, you know, put, now, now you're out in the middle of a state road and you have to let the other one pass or, you know, where do you go with this? The road's simply not wide enough. The information the commission received from the plan, the information that you all as a commission received from the planning commission on the width of Willis Road is extremely The width in the roadway and the planning commission stated that between thirty-two and forty-four feet at different points on Willis Road. I don't know what measuring tape they used, if, you know, how they did that, but the measuring tape I used, it's not gonna, it's not that. I don't know where those, um, if they, where that, where those figures came from. I know some people didn't even go out there and from your planning commission, they were there, like, didn't even go out there and look at the site and drive down the road to know what it was about. So, how do you cast a vote on that if you're in support of that, if you don't even know what the site's about? So, that's an issue for you to deal with, with your, uh, planning commission. These are the neighbors that are opposed to the PUD. Their addresses and telephone numbers, you're more than welcome to this. I can leave you this, uh, thumb drive, but Jeff McKenzie at one twenty-two Willis Road, he's opposed to it. Ann Stevens at one thirty-two Willis Road's opposed to it. I'm at one thirty-four, I'm opposed to it. Tammy Jo Kistrog, I guess is how you pronounce her name, at one thirty-five Willis Road is opposed to it. Connie Stallings at one thirty-eight, Cynthia Snead at one forty-one, Chris Willis at one forty-two, and Rick Peterson at one fifty-two Willis Road are all opposed to this going So, my question, uh, that if I were you, I would pose to me, is there a compromise for this? Can the, the, the neighbors of Willis Road and the Valentines, can we come to a happy meeting and figure this out, okay? We're not unreasonable people, there's gotta be compromise with everything. And is there a compromise to this? Yes, there is. The majority of neighbors on Willis Road are opposed to the RV and, uh, RV slash trailer park and primitive campsites due to the criminal element, additional traffic concerns being brought into Putnam County and our neighborhood. Willis Road is obviously, obviously not wide enough to withstand the high volume of traffic that the PUD is going to bring. If Mr. Valentine were to forego the RV and primitive campsites, the neighbors of Willis Road would be agreeable to that, okay? With that, it still leads to everything else that he wants to do except those two items. He's still the pickleball and volleyball court, the trust, the equestrian arena for the horses and riders, weddings, campsite, camp stories, and this is all, everything I pulled out of, uh, the PUD that they had, uh, said they wanted. Bird watching, fishing for ponds, family reunions, corn maids, youth activities, all of this stuff they can still go do minus the traffic down the road and other elements of, um, criminals being brought into. Criminals may, may be criminals, may not be criminals, but who knows? We're not doing background checks on all these people to figure this out, so how do we know what's being brought in here? In closing, "When deciding on a house that you will make your home, you must make choices. Each family has their own set of ideals and choices to make. For the families on Willis Road, our location is one of our big choices. The families have been here for decades. Choosing to stay in a neighborhood we picked, we choose this area for all things Mr. Valentine is now wanting to sell as a novelty to strangers. The seclusion and country lifestyle we have, we, we all know and love will be put on display and offered up like a souvenir. It would be prostituting the familiarity and, and small-town feel that we sought when deciding to raise our families, where to raise our families. By allowing this development to move forward, you'll be taking our choice away. You will allow an influx of strangers and traffic to infiltrate our quiet family neighborhood. In doing so, you will be taking away the things that we love and choose about Willis Road. We chose to live there, okay? We chose for it to be quiet. We chose not to live in a city atmosphere where there's the hustle and bustle of that. We chose for it to be slowed, slowed down and we don't need the extra people down there and really it's not honestly warranted nor will the road, nor will, nor will the road handle it." So, that's the end of mine. Any questions that you have for me?
Mr. Rawls?
So, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I own an RV and you're, I'm, I'm not trying to get technical on you. You're saying RVs and trailers. So, in my estimation, an RV is a camper trailer that can be hooked behind a vehicle, whether it can be driven or, or pulled. And you're, in your example, um, you show a fifth-wheel RV, okay? So, um-
It's a bumper pull, but same thing.
And, and I can assure you, in the campgrounds that I stay at, you have good, conservative individuals that don't get out of hand, they go out there and have fun. I go to places like North Beach Campground, I'll spend two weeks here this year and drive back and forth. I was just in Wakava Falls Springs last weekend, weekend before last, um, but there was nobody being arrested, there was no ambulances, no, no sheriff's deputies, no police cars. Very well controlled by the, the operators. And, and it's recently been taken over by a new operator that's building, um, small cabins that are renting for well over a hundred dollars per night. Um, and this is, uh, and these are the kind of folks that we're talking about. I'm not sure where you get your statistics from, but, um, one campground that we have in Putnam County that's fairly new, Renegades on the River down in, um, Willaka, I've tried twice to get somebody on the phone to make a reservation. They stay booked out a year in advance.
That's what they do.
And they've spent more than a million dollars in getting their place up and running on, on just their sites. So, um, I, I, I hear your anxiety and I, I, I can appreciate it. And I don't know what I would do if somebody knocked on my door and said, "Hey, guy two doors up wants to put a campground in the neighborhood, what do you think?" I'd probably feel the same way you do. But at the same time, um, with what we have to offer in Putnam County, especially regarding ecotourism, I think this is a great opportunity for folks, um, like Keith and Jocelyn to be able to open up a business. They, they've established a business plan and as a business owner, I'm sitting here thinking, I wrote a note here, um, you know, revenue lost by taking out the RV portion. I don't know what his business, how his business model would work if he didn't have that revenue. I don't know if, if he, something he can just wipe out and say, "Oh, we'll still be okay, our, our numbers projected, we'll make enough rev, enough income, uh, from every, all, all the other activities that you listed." My understanding from staff is that Willis Road has right-ofways that are not in dirt right now. They're, they're, that the right-ofways exceed the width of the roads that are in place now.
That is false.
Is that, is that, 'cause that's, that's what Mr. Brown, uh, explained to me, that we have additional right-ofways in wider than what you see in, in, in the white sand or, or that lime rock.
Yeah. The, the travel lanes do not extend the extent of the right-ofway.
Okay.
Um, and the, the comment, um, about what was stated at the, uh, planning commission was based on the right-ofway, which-
Right.
-ranges from thirty foot to forty-five feet for the right-ofway. Now, that, I agree, the travel lanes, as are laid out presently, do not extend that. But that would address one of the conditions or concerns about-
My understanding is they-
-driving on private property.
They would not be traveling on private property if they do pull out of those travel lanes, um, because you do have areas that go to forty-four feet wide and that, that would probably, um, explain the disparity between the seventeen feet and the fourteen feet that you got when you're measuring. I will tell you this, you are a great presenter and you have done a great job at your presentation. Um, you're very well prepared. You've got my, you've got me questioning a lot of things right now. And, you know, as, as far as the criminal element goes, brother, you could invite somebody in your house next week that could, that could do all sorts of bad things. There's a lot of bad people in this world that have bad things in their hearts and you may have friends that do that, I don't know. Nobody can control what their neighbors do or bring to their property. Um, I, you know, and Cindy got up and spoke to the character of Mr. Valentine and his wife and I think, and I, I know Mr. Valentine personally, um, I mean, rode with him, um, very giving guy. I don't, and, and I, I know what you're saying as far as what happens if something happens to him and the next owner comes in and decides to make changes, but, um, that would require, any, any changes to the PUD would require somebody to come back in in front of this commission or future commissions. And I-
So, what you're saying is that if an owner changes for that PUD, that has to come back in front of the commission?
No, sir.
Okay, so-
Excuse me. Well, I appreciate this exercise, it's not gonna turn into a debate.
Okay, I just had a question.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Well, I wish you'd ask them of me and then we'll try to get them, I, I don't want you and Commissioner Rawls to debate here, so-
Sure, sure.
Please, if you address the chair and then, uh, we'll try to answer the questions, but just keep in mind, in most cases, we let the applicant speak, the county does, and we give the, everybody else three minutes to speak. I waived that today where you would have a fair, a fair proposal on where we are.
Thank you.
And so, uh, if we could please ask him his questions and then if you would address me back, I would appreciate it.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Are you, we done, Commissioner Rawls, or you have any more?
Um, just, you know, I, I, I wrote a note here, assumes criminal intent, um, and the criminals will use the business. You know, I, I, again, I, I think that, um, that can happen anywhere, anytime with any business or any residential, um, application, so, I'm through. Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Goddard?
Yeah, I, you brought up three areas that you said, you know, has all these high-crime areas, uh, and you didn't state, uh, yeah, so we don't have apples to apples here. Is that an RV park? Is that a mobile home park?
They were, I pulled them from both.
I know.
And, and I, I get what you're saying.
The reason I, and I, I listened to Commissioner Rawls and, and he and I both, we go camping a lot, not that we go camping together, but we go camping a lot.
Hey, twenty-twenty, it's okay.
We just made that clear.
Yeah, that's right. But I'm telling you, I know the areas that I go to, they're, I'm not saying there's not something that happens occasionally, but that's a rarity. You go, these people stay in their campsite area, uh, in, in the case of like this, this is a destination. They didn't come here to, to go to Disney World. They came here to enjoy that spot. And, and I know, 'cause I've done this all over the country. We go into a certain area to enjoy that area. We don't really travel very far, we stay right there. And there is no, I've never seen a problem, as a matter of fact, uh, the camaraderie of anything else. If I pulled up next to, to Mr. Rawls and he forgot his rod to pull his, uh, uh, awning out with, I mean, we, we just work hand in a hand together. It's, there's two different elements there. I've seen mobile home parks, and I'm not knocking them, I just know that there is activities that happen in there. RV parks, mm-mm, it's a totally different, uh, just, just totally different. Uh, like I said, and the traffic, as we, I, and I've already went over that too, that road is wide enough. However, I've camped in some, a lot of areas, it, it is narrow, it's ten feet. You see that car coming, they find a spot, this one goes and this one goes. And I, I understand where you're coming from and as you say, I don't know how I'd like it if I was out there, but I don't see this being a problem. I really don't think you're gonna see it staying full all the time. I don't think you're gonna see the, uh, the activities that you're, you know, looking at. I think what you're gonna see is people who came here, uh, to enjoy this lifestyle. We, I say it all the time, and I'll probably cover it at the end of this thing.
Yes, sir.
We have a wonderful place. Yes, sir.
Uh, we're, we've kinda moved ahead of ourselves and we're moving into closing comments. I need to finish out-
Okay. Well, let me go with that.
... of the differ, I appreciate that, I really do, but-
I'm just saying, we, we are-
On to the rest of the public comment and I'm, also, but before I do, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Pickens and then Commissioner Harvey for their comments. Like I said, if you'd hold your closing comments to closing, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I wanted to wait till I heard both sides, okay, of, of this before I asked some questions. So, the first thing is, is this is, this place is operating at some capacity now, correct?
Yes, I think it's legally operating at some capacity, but I think there's also a difference of opinion between at what level because some people interpret agrotourism different than other people. I think that's a maybe a fair comment, isn't it, Mike, or no?
Yeah, um, there are activities going out there. Uh, for instance, the landscape business is existing and ongoing, they, since twenty sixteen, when he received a special use permit.
Okay, is a wedding venue going?
No, there, there should, I don't, there shouldn't be wedding venues operating out there right now.
Okay, all right.
He's asking for that.
So, in, in your compromise, you had that they could have the equestrian events, wedding events, and things like that?
Yes, sir.
Um, I mean, to get a horse to this facility, you're gonna have to have a big truck and a big trailer, right? So, you're gonna have some of that truck traffic, right?
You would have some of it, but not all of it.
Okay, all right. Mike, my biggest concern is, is road and noise. That's my biggest concern with this because I have dealt with it in South Putnam with renegades, okay? And it was the noise issue. And I don't believe this county really has, um, a way to enforce, you know, the noise. I really don't think that they do. Now, they're working on it, but they don't. Now, they, they have, code enforcement has trained some people and they've gone to renegades and used the decimal meter and things like that and they've always been under, but this is a different type of venue and a different type of noise, so I have that concern. And Mike, is the road the width that was presented at the, um, commission, the planning commission meeting, or is it the width of what he's showing us that people are driving on? And then what does the county do to get it wider so it can accommodate two, two trucks and trailers passing at the same time?
Well, I'm, the, um, the travel lanes are the, the distance that, that, um, that gentleman had indicated, they're, that's, they are, they're seventeen or whatever feet there are. But the right-ofway out there for the road is a minimum of thirty feet. It ranges between thirty feet and forty-five feet. So, there is adequate room in the right-ofway to, um, if, if there's a, and it's, again, it's a county-maintained road, so, um, county desired to have it widened, the county could do that, they could ask, you know, a, you know, a concept, I mean, maybe the applicant participates in helping in that cost. I mean, there's a lo, num, number of options that the board could take, um, and tie into that if there's a desire on the board to address that, if you believe that it needs to be done.
In all sincerity and all fairness, do we really think that this, they're gonna line up to go out there for these eighteen spots? That they're gonna line the road and-
No, no, I don't, but I, I mean, they've got an issue on the road-
Yeah.
And I'm not gonna be the commissioner gets called if this road gets tore up. It's gonna be whoever's district that is. I just, I've dealt with some of that. So, I just, I have a concern of why, during this process, Mike, and I'm just making a statement, um, is why that hasn't been addressed, you know? It, to public works to say, "Mr. Valentine, you mean, probably need to go and we would prefer that maybe you work with public works to get this thing as wide as it's supposed to be." Now, we got roads in South Putnam just like this, where we're using just what is there, but the right-ofway's ten feet on either side of it, so I understand that. That, that's all I've got right now, I'm sorry.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, um, Mr. Brown, you were gonna answer a question and you got cut off, so would you answer that question for me about the PUD applicant and changes to that?
Oh, it's, um, any changes to the PUD will have, be required to, to come to the board for final approval. Uh, that, included in that is not a change of ownership. Change of ownership would not necessarily have to come back to the board, but any changes to the PUD, whether it be by Mr. Valentine or a future owner, would be required to come in front of the Board of County Commissioners for approval.
And one last thing, it was on my, if we're acting like a, I mean, judges we are in this process, so please forgive us for being kind of sterile environment, if we were to widen Willis Road, that would really take out a lot of the beauty of Willis Road, a lot of nice trees along that area, so just because you might have thirty to forty-four feet, you know, you would really kinda make a mess in that area by cleaning out some of those valuable trees and the canopy that sits over it. So I think everything else I have was addressed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing. There is another road that comes off of Hoover Road, it's called Deer Track Trail, that Mr. Valentine's property does butt up to, that he could bring those campers through that area as well.
Okay, thanks for that comments. I appreciate you coming today and giving your presentation. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in, in, in opposition to this? Okay, Mr. Valentine, would you like to have a rebuttal with it, with me stepping that far out of the, out of the regular way that we do it, by allowing such a long presentation on the other side? I'm gonna also allow you a rebuttal if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. No, no rebuttal as far as anything. I love my road, I try to help the county out. When they have, power goes out, I have the equipment and we take care of it, and we got our road opened up. When the hurricane came through, we were there so that we cleaned up the road where the power lines were, and Clay Electric was able to come in right after that. So I do have a good working ship, relationship with Clay Electric on any of that. My neighbors call me if there's a tree down in the road and we'll go push it and get it out of the way. We've always done that. If they need help with any of that, we'll take care of it. I like my trees, I'm chairman of the Tree Committee for the City of Platteck, I love my trees, so any trees that we can leave in there, we want to leave in there, save it all. We have a trimmer that we trim up the height of the trees going down the road, I mean, up to seventy-five feet, so I do not want to disturb our trees, so.
Thank you, Keith.
We do have some other comments that were emailed, so maybe that could be, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. With that, I'm going, do we have any emails on this one?
We do.
Okay, how many have we got?
Six.
Okay, and, and we, we normally take emails, and the, I was chairman of the planning commission for many, many years, I don't remember ever reading an email, that's the only reason I'm asking.
No, we had, we did not receive any, I don't believe, if we did, it's always provided in your, everything that we receive and goes through the planning commission is included in your packet.
Okay, so these came to B O C C comment?
Yes, and they're dated June eighteenth, June nineteenth, and June twenty-second.
Can that be included as public record? Do we have to read every one of them now that we're not meeting virtually anymore?
I mean, I, I advise clients to rely on how you noticed it. If we, if we told people that we'd read it in, I mean, I'd follow that procedure until it's no longer noticed that way.
I would have no objection.
Okay, so we, excuse me?
I would have no objection.
Okay, so basically, I'm just wanting to make sure that these, we've got to get back to normal here, guys, and normal is what we normally do, and so I don't have any problem as long as the, that he tells me that we need to do it, we'll sit here Lamar and read them. But I just, so what you're saying is we need to read them because this meeting was, this hearing was said that we would take comments, but didn't the comp, didn't the advertisement say that we were gonna take comments before the meeting about public comment? Or is this considered part of public comment?
I'm sorry, I don't remember what the notice said for today.
That language be, would be in what Mike Brown advertised for this.
Well, but please, before we send out another notice, could we get our attorney to look at it again for us, please? Instead of, I think it changes a little different from week to week.
This flipped on us halfway through.
If we could get back to, to a regular notice to be sent out, I'd appreciate that. Please start reading them, Ms. Parsons.
Hi, my name is Joshua Trembley, my church youth group spent the night at Trails End. We had a great time, it is a very nice and peaceful place, lots of land to run around and play. They have horses and cabins, we had a fire and were able to hang out and have a good time with each other. One of the things I liked most was how peaceful and quiet it was, no traffic and no phones, the owners are very nice. This is from Travis Garner. To whom it may concern, I reside in Wisconsin and recently traveled to Florida with my family. We stayed with Trails End while there. Keith and Jocelyn Valentine were amazing hosts and made us feel right at home. I was born and raised in Florida and love to get back as much as possible. We would love to be able to come back again and bring our camper this time. Having that option seems to be the only thing Trails End is missing right now to make it a great all-around destination. Thank you for your time. This is from Dallas Garner. Dear Board of Commissioners, within the last couple years, I flew from Oregon and enjoyed the opportunity to stay on the property run by Trails End. Keith Valentine is an upstanding individual who maintains a very clean and tidy property. Given that my experience on the property was so enjoyable, I would do it again. This is from Mr. and Mrs. Dwayne Ivy. To whom it may concern, my husband and I were from Cedar City, Utah, staying at Trails End in Putnam County from November twenty nineteen through March twenty twenty. The accommodations were very pleasing, clean, and roomy. The owners are great and very accommodating to their guests. The grounds are very well kept and clean. My hubby loves to fish and he certainly had his fill of that. Mr. Keith stalks three ponds that you are allowed to fish. It is so very quiet and relaxing out there with nature. We noticed they have RV hookups and inquired about them and was told, yes, they do rent them out. As we are in our eighties, it is taxing on us to have to haul and set up all the time, so we are looking forward to setting up our RV and keeping it there to return every winter. Mr. Keith has assured us it would be okay. So excited to return this winter and get away from the cold. Iris Garner, Rexburg, Idaho. In regards to Valentine PUD, myself and my family have enjoyed staying on the property of Trails End that is owned by Keith Valentine. There are very few places that I have stayed that I have felt as safe and Mr. Valentine did his best to make our stay very enjoyable. Everything on the property is very clean and well kept, and it is very rare to stay at an outside environment that is so clean and well taken care of. Mr. Valentine makes sure he is hands-on to make sure that everything is working properly. We did not have any problems, but if we had, I'm sure that whatever our problems were, that they were, would have been attended to immediately. We are looking into getting an RV and hope that when we travel, we can stay in our RV at Keith Valentine's place. The big thing that I loved while staying at Mr. Valentine's place is that I felt proud to be an American because Trails End represents the American dream, the dream to have and do what Mr. Valentine has accomplished. I love to be an American, Iris Gardner. Nathan and Amy Reese, Lexington, Kentucky. Dear Putnam County Board of Commissioners, it is truly an honor to make a recommendation for Trails End Outdoors LLC. We have had the privilege of spending the night in the lodge and touring this beautiful property. The thought and hard work put into the creation of this delightful ranch is a credit to the community. The lodge was clean and relaxing with one of the most comfortable beds outside our own. Jocelyn put a lot of time into adding just the right touches to give it a homey ambiance. We love how it and the western cabins are nestled under the trees with the feel of privacy and quiet. Although we didn't stay in the one-room cowboy cabins, we had a chance to visit them and enjoy the clever creativity and sturdy workmanship of each one. The property is spacious and well suited to making this an experience in itself with its refreshing pool and fishing ponds, complete with horses and cattle. Icing on the cake is the kind attentiveness and enthusiasm of Keith and Jocelyn to make a comfortable, enjoyable, safe stay for their guests. We have no doubt that any additions to this property will be done professionally and be a welcome addition to Putnam County. And that's all of them.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Parsons. Now that I'm all closed public comment at this time, and open it up for board deliberation, and I'd just like to start by saying, if we compare this to Renegades, that'd be like comparing Renegades to Hogwaller. Not the same thing. Renegades has got, what, a hundred places from RVs? He's got a full-blown restaurant, he's got a bar, they part, I mean, they have bands and party and do all that. It's not the same as a, a eight, eight-unit deal with some primitive camping, and especially when he's trying to turn this into an ecotourism, agribusiness. I just, you know, I, I don't really see it being a, a big issue. I mean, the road, okay, it's seventeen foot wide, but it looked like it was a nice seventeen foot wide road. If he filled it up every weekend, and God bless him, I hope he does, but if he filled it up every weekend, you're talking about eighteen RVs in and out once, once before and once after the weekend. I just don't see it being the amount of impact that, that, that a place like Renegades or Hogwaller or something like that could be. And if you're not gonna put a dude ranch, where the hell you gonna put it, other than in agricultural zoning? I mean, I know that Keith doesn't call this a dude ranch or whatever, but to me, it's pretty close. Low impact, come out, spend the weekend, sit around the campfire, tell stories, you know, maybe have a little barbecue for the guests. I mean, that's the type of thing that I know he's trying to do, because he's explained it to me. So where are you gonna have something like this if you don't have it in the country? Where somebody can come pet a goat, or ride a horse, or do something along those lines? I mean, seriously, where are you gonna do it if it's not there?
Went to Putnam County and showed it to them.
Anyhow, I'll open the floor up for, for a motion or further discussion. Commissioner Rawls?
I'll make a comment, then I'll make a motion. I can't get over the goat roping and pet goat, but, you know, I, this is obviously very sensitive to the residents, but I think it's a great opportunity for Putnam County, you know, with, Keith and his wife are great people, I know them personally. Based on the emails that I heard, nothing but glowing reports, you know, the hospitality, the environment, I think it's gonna be an asset to the community, and while it'll create some change in the neighborhood, I think that, at the end of the day, it's gonna be well-received and worthwhile to the, to the community. My, my comparison to Renegades, by the way, was not, I was not trying to compare apples to apples, I only brought it up to say that if you go look at Renegades and you look at the, if, if you're, if you're an RV person and you go look at the RVs, you can tell the, the higher-end class RVs from the, the middle, middle-class, the low-class RVs, there's, there's something for everybody, but you're not gonna see pop-up campers at, at Renegades. So, and I'm not saying that, that to be disparaging the people that have pop-up-
I don't think my comment was aimed at that comment, it was kinda aimed at the noise comment at the other end.
I'm all Chris Adam, man.
It was coming from District One that has all the equipment.
But I, I stand in support of this, and, you know, I, I would make a motion that we approve PUD application nineteen dash zero zero three.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir, there is.
Commissioner?
While I appreciate your, your comment, I really wasn't comparing Renegades to this place, but noise is noise, doesn't matter where it is, and I understand there's a, a wedding venue that could happen here. Last time I went to a wedding, there was a van, there was alcohol, there's noise, okay? What type of vehicles are gonna be driven on this place? You gotta take that into consideration, too, and the road. Those are the concerns that are gonna continue to come up with this. And I don't know Mr. Valentine, I've met him at the Wild Game, he says it, so I haven't spoken to him about this. So those are the concerns I, I, that I have, and that's why I addressed it, was the noise and the road. So, and noise is noise, whether it's coming from Renegades or it's coming from Hogwaller, or if it's coming from, from this venue, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Harvey?
You know, I, I happen to agree with you on this, you know, where else are you gonna put these types of situations if you don't put them in agricultural land? Unfortunately, we do have residential and agricultural pretty close together in some cases, but, you know, I, I like the idea that we're going to have something like this in Putnam County, and Commissioner Rawls, my great-granddaughter yesterday went to go get goat pictures taken. I know, it's funny, it was funny to me, I said, "What? Goat pictures? What are you talking about?" But I guess it's a really cool thing, she's four months old, and they were really cute pictures, so, you know, I, I like the atmosphere of Putnam County, the hometown tranquility, I like that, but I also like people coming to see what we have to offer in a very controlled environment, let me say. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Thank you, and, you know, keep in mind, one last comment before I call for the vote, is that in a PUD environment, if there's violations made in the PUD, we can also violate that PUD and make them come back to us, so it's not just like it's a one-way street, they can go do whatever they want. We can also violate that PUD if they're working outside of the existing PUD agreement. So it does, it's about the best way we have to do something like this. So, with that being said, if there's no further comment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. We're going to, you, do you ladies need a five-minute break before we move into these last few things? Do any of you old men sitting up here to daisies? Okay, we'll continue going, then. Kenny, do y'all have it, does, you have anything on behalf of the clerk?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay.
Turn the mic on. Yes, we do. Kim Smith today is at a virtual summer conference, and the reason I'm here, but last year, Susan Franks and I were at the budget workshop, not the, not the presentation, but the budget workshop. We talked about a server at that workshop, and, in fact, I offered for the clerk's office to pay, to pay for half of it, thirty-five thousand dollars. We were told, you know, we'll give the money back in two weeks anyway, so we, we gave the money back, but it was indicated at that time that we would be getting a server pretty quick, because y'all were aware that we need the server. Well, here we are at the end of June, and we still need that four-hundred server.
We bought him AS400 server.
Ah, they're here.
Kenny, we can check in on it for you, but we're definitely having some IT issues, so I don't know if this is an IT issue, a purchasing issue, or what it is.
That's right.
But we will definitely look into it for your, for the clerk's department.
I'd, I'd certainly appreciate that, if we could go ahead and get that taken care of, and, because the maintenance runs out on that server in October.
Mr. Suggs, didn't we, I thought we approved the purchase of an AS400 server about six months ago?
I'll get with, uh, Mr. Stinder and IT and see where we're at with the process.
That was approved.
We're pretty sure you're correct, Commissioner Rawls, I think we did just that, and if we didn't, we definitely approved this deal when it was made to us by the clerk, so, you know, if it's because this is government, it takes a year to tie your shoes, then maybe we can try to get one of them tied and get this thing bought.
We probably need to switch to slip-on shoes, make it a little easier and quicker, but, but we'll certainly check into this, and, and if there's a, there was a request by Mr. Smith, the honorable Mr. Smith, and, so we'll look and see where we're at with that. I'll get a, I'll get with IT and get a response.
Thank you, Administrator Suggs.
Thank you very much.
That it, that it, Mr. Brown?
That'd be all, thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any appointments, Commissioner Rawls?
Did we get an application from Chuck Rutten?
Mr. Goddard?
I have none.
I have none today. Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, sir, I wanna appoint Doug Thompson to the Fair Authority.
Doug Thompson?
Doug Thompson, I didn't have my microphone, Douglas Thompson? Sorry about that. He submitted an application.
In lieu of Sally Becker?
Exactly.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I need some help on waterways and trails. Mr. Vernstein has moved out of the area, sent me an email that he moved to Gainesville, so if anybody, Craig, Craig is looking for, for someone also, so if anybody has any ideas, if they would pass them along.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Pickens, do you have any today?
Yeah, I wanna renominate JR Newbold for Fair Authority.
Actually, you can appoint him, he's your district, he doesn't require a vote.
Right, and he's-
So Commissioner Pickens reappointed JR Newbold for that position, and, and what was the name for District Four again, Commissioner Harvey?
Douglas Thompson.
Douglas. You have an application on Douglas Thomas on?
Yeah.
Only reason I'm asking is our ordinance says somebody new has to have an application, somebody existing doesn't, and that's the reason I'm asking.
Yeah, Laura sent me that.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna ask while we're in a meeting, were you able to reach out to JR Grimes?
Actually, Chuck Rutten has expressed an interest, and he has property in District Two.
Okay.
And I was told that the-
I misspoke, and he did put an application in.
Oh, he did, okay, so then I'd nominate Chuck Rutten to Fair Board for District Two.
To replace Peggy Cone?
Yes.
Okay, you have an applic- Okay, you have an application on this?
I have one for Charles Rutten, that's the same.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, okay. I've never called Charles before, so.
Does he like to go by Chuck?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nobody would know who Charles Rutten is.
If you didn't say Chuck Rutten, okay. Okay, and that is also an appointment because it's a district appointment, so. Okay. All right, is there any other appointments today? If not, we'll move down to the county administrator's comments. I'm sure he has some.
No, sir, I actually only, very briefly, it's already on your agenda, so there's no need for me to remind you of the five oh five. But I did just receive a message that, I'll check on it when we get done here and see if I can get a confirmation by the two o'clock meeting. It looks like we have purchased the server that was, was requested, and, and it may be installed here in the very near future, so I'll check in at two o'clock to verify that.
Okay, good deal. Attorney Colonel Commando, do you have any comments for us today, sir?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, good deal. Commissioners' comments, I'm gonna start with Commissioner Rawls.
Stacy, I wish you luck in your future, and it's been a privilege working with you. Otherwise, it's been pretty quiet lately. I can't wait for us to get to work on the Barden Bridge. I'm still fielding a few phone calls regarding that, but otherwise, I think I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Goddard?
I'm gonna comment to Stacy, 'cause with this COVID, I hadn't been able to come in there and visit with you as much as I used to, but every time I came in there, she would inform me how many days and how many hours she had left to retirement. So I'm so glad that you are gonna get to enjoy this time, and I know you're gonna enjoy that cabin. Other, my same thing that I say, we're very fortunate to live in Putnam County, and get out and see Putnam County.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'd like to say, Stacy, good luck to you in the future. I'm sure we're gonna see you around. I know you're not moving completely, but, you know, I haven't gotten to retirement. I don't know at my age when that will come, if it'll come, but I look forward to the day, one day, that I can sit back and pass the torch down and let the younger generation take it forward, and, you know, but, but you did leave this place better than you found it, and what more can we ask of anybody in life is to leave it better than they found it? And I commend you on that, so enjoy retirement. Gentlemen, tomorrow, you had an email today from Forest Association of Counties about Dr. Tim Chapman, FSU professor. It's on demographics. I will tell you, if you want something very riveting that you think is not riveting, go watch this webinar tomorrow. What you think about demographics and how we, we move our county forward, the numbers will tell you differently. They'll tell you a lot differently about populations and how populations move, even inside Putnam County. So I would encourage you, if you got time tomorrow at two o'clock, sign up for that webinar on demogra, it was probably the most, out of all my classes that I've taken throughout the years, I think this is one of the best ones I've ever enjoyed. It was just, but I'm that kinda weird guy that likes numbers and, you know, how things are moving, but really watch it and you'll see. You'll, you'll enjoy it.
For clarification, that was a Seminole professor?
Florida State University professor, but he was really good. I know, I got the chomp. I guess we can't do the, is that against the law now, or?
Ain't against the law.
I'm, nevermind, I'm not going. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pickens?
Thank you, Chairman Turner. First, I just wanna recognize and thank our new Public Works Director, Mike Troxel. Last Friday morning, for about two or three hours, we rode around District One, so I could show him some of the issues and, and some of the beauty there. And I'll go ahead and say it, I only saw one piece of equipment, but it was the one piece of equipment that I wanted in, in South Putnam, the boom mower, so I explained to him a, a strip of-
We have one of that?
Of grass that I needed, yeah. So, anyway, but it was, it was really enjoyable, and he learned a lot about South Putnam. And he is actually renting a house in Wallaka, so hopefully he's gonna move there. So, anyway, I spoke with David Gerard, and he's been working with, with us to get the surveys and some stuff compiled to be able to go to Water Management, to see the feasibility of the boat ramp in Georgetown. And he has a meeting set up with a representative from Water Management in about two weeks. They've been kinda slowed down like everybody else with the COVID problem, but it looks like they're coming out in the field now, so he's gonna set that meeting up for one afternoon in a couple of weeks. Stacy, I wanna wish you well, and like I said, I've really enjoyed working with you and what you helped me with, with the budgets and along. And, you know, our first six months as new commissioners, me and Buddy, it was kind of a, kind of a rough time, and you helped us through that, and I just appreciate all your efforts. And on a sadder note, former county commissioner, four-term commissioner, Ms. Nancy Harris, her husband Lloyd passed away yesterday from a short illness, so keep the Harris family in, in your thoughts and your prayers, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. I, I hope that we can address the flag issue at the fire stations. I mean, that's pretty bad if we, if that's, I'm really glad that Mike brought that before us today and brought that to our attention. Also, I'd like to take another opportunity to thank the Finance Department for the, for working with the, the auditors, and because that's a big part of us obtaining our unmodified audit status, which is, according to them, the highest recommendation we can get in a, in an audit position. So I appreciate everybody that helped us get there. It's a far cry from where we were two years ago, when everything that you touched created an audit flag. Now you get an unmodified audit. I think that's a very good pat on the back for the board and for the employees of Putnam County. I know that everybody's tired of hearing it, and that's the reason I went last today, because I was hoping somebody else would bring it up. I know everybody's tired of it. We've had fifty-one cases of COVID in the last week. I happen to know for a fact that it's not in family clusters anymore like it was. It's moved into the professional community. It's moved into businesses. It moves, and it's not gonna be long, the way it's going. It's not gonna be long, and every single family's gonna get touched by it some way or another, or they're gonna know somebody that has, or they're going to do, I'm just telling you, I'm not saying that we need to change anything except for the fact somebody in this world needs to start paying attention. They need to start, if they've been told they're positive, they need to stay home and not roam the streets, or go to the sandbars, or go wherever that it is that they should go when they know they're positive. Now, I know I sound a little upset about it, and be quite frankly about it, I'm kinda mad as hell, because if somebody in somebody else's family knows they're positive and they come and they, they expose my children or my grandchildren when they knew they were positive, that is unexcusable. That's no different if one of my family members dies. That's no different than if you pull a gun and shoot them. So I think we need to be very careful here. Everybody's guard is being down. We're open back up. It doesn't count anymore. COVID's all gone. That is so far from the truth that we're gonna kill a lot of people if we don't start paying a little more attention to it. I spent eight hours at the O.C. yesterday because of all the COVID cases that's come up in the last week. And, yeah, I get a little emotional about it, along with Kenna and the other contact tracers, the people that are doing this, because, and especially when you get so many people, they're having to work from, from daylight in the morning till four-thirty the next morning, go home and get two or three hours sleep, and get back down there again to go back to tracing all these out, because if you don't find these people fast and let them know that they're positive, then they're spreading it throughout the community at no fault of their own. So we've got, we, I mean, we just keep, got to keep remaining vigilant a little while longer, is what we've got to do. And when Ms. Marriott the Health Department tells you to wash your hands, or wear your mask, or do whatever, pay some attention to her. Wash your hands. When you, especially when you walk up and shake hands, or bump fists, or do whatever, you know, I've been seeing, I've been guilty of it myself, bumping fists, and then I guess that makes me think that it doesn't get on the back of your hand, only the front. So, anyhow, like I said, I want to, I want to absolutely press the case that this is not family clusters any longer. This has moved into the professional community, into car dealerships, hairdressers. I can go on and on and on. I'm just telling you, it has moved into the, the community. So it's not personal clusters any longer, or family clusters. It's more of a city cluster, a professional cluster, a community cluster, something, it's more than just a family cluster like it was at one time mostly. So anyhow, with that being said, I, I don't have any more comments for that, other than Stacy. I absolutely wish you a good retirement. I truly do. And if there isn't any more comments to come before the board today, yes, help, come here. Yes, we do have a five o'clock. Thank you for reminding me. We have a five oh five today, which means I'm gonna recess this board meeting instead of rejoining it until five oh five. Thank you, Commissioner Goddard.